All right, I'd like to call to order the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, September 24th, in Carlisle. I'll quickly go through the agenda. We'll have a roll call vote and then we'll, from there, go into our agenda for the evening. So, we're going to, at 7:00, start with community input, then have appointments and resignations. We're going to have a public hearing with the N-Star for the electric company. Then we're going to have a Fall Town Meeting warrant review. Then at 7:30, human resources presentation, done by Aubrey. Then a complete streets presentation, which is important to discuss about our streets and roads in Carlisle. Then the TA bylaw draft review. Then at 9:20, a town administrator report. We'll go through the warrants and minutes, cemetery deed transfer requests, liaison reports, and then further community input. So I'd like to start by doing a roll call vote for the attendance tonight. I'm Travis Snell, Chair of the Select Board.
I'm Barney Arnold, the Vice Chair of the Select Board.
Scott Fiola, Clerk of the Select Board.
Jay Reed, member.
Okay, and we have one, one member.
He's here.
He's still on Mount LeLoy.
Okay, well, he's not here at the moment, but David Modell, and I'm sure he'll be coming in shortly.
I think he's just using the facilities.
Okay, great. Well, why don't we start? We generally start with community input. This is the opportunity that anyone in the community may make a comment on any topic, preferably ones that we're discussing tonight, but you're welcome to talk about anything. We have a policy here where we'll have one person speak at a time, and we have a two-minute timing of the comment session. We do that in order to kind of allow people to have enough time to comment if there are multiple people commenting and we want to move through our agenda. So I'll look to our audience first. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment or have a, make public input? You're welcome to introduce yourself if you'd like, or anything. We were talking a little bit before the meeting, but...
We really appreciate you allowing 3:35 to be present to work in our communication airbag.
Great, thank you. Hello, David.
Hi.
Welcome.
My mother's fine, very gentle. Why just stop a 96-year-old from telling the stories of the day?
All right, so it looks like online we have one hand up for a request from Debbie Bentley. Debbie, do you want to speak?
Yes, thank you.
Can you please introduce yourself and your address, please?
Sorry, Debbie Bentley Hildre, 128 Hildre. I'm here with my, as the co-chair of the Cultural Council, just to remind you and invite you, if you haven't received an invite, to the Cultural Council's annual reception for grantees and to discuss the work of the council. It's tomorrow at Center Park at four, from 4:00 to 5:00, and we will have music and refreshments, as well as a few speakers. So please, it's going to be a nice fall day, apparently, so wear your hats and your jackets and come along and hear about what we're up to.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Debbie, and congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
And there's usually some good music there when, yes, they usually bring something with them, so, and refreshments is a rule, so.
Perfect. All right, are there any other comments online? Can't see the screen at this point.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right, it looks like there are no additional comments, so we'll go into our agenda and we'll work on the appointments and resignations. The first one is regarding the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust.
Do you want to make that case?
No, since I'm on the...
Okay. I move to appoint Sophia Norris, 145 Carlisle Pines Drive, to the Carlisle Affordable Housing Trust with a term to end June 30th, 2026.
Second?
Okay, is there any discussion? Any further information we should know?
I think she's going to be a good member, ready to roll her sleeves up, and we still need somebody from Select Board, a second member from Select Board, because we're sometimes having trouble making quorum with that, with being down. We were down two members, we'll be only down one now.
Also, good to see, I noticed she's been in town for three years, so it's kind of nice to have a new person get involved, too.
Great. All right, let's take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right.
So the interim town clerk?
Oh, that wasn't Donna Harv thing.
Yeah.
Okay, that's on the new agenda, I'm sorry. All right.
So, so we want to first thank James Mullen, who helped get us through the first election and helped steady an office that had a really hard summer. So that was really great to have that stabilized. So starting today, Ryan did temporarily appoint a new interim town clerk, Rosemary Harville, and so tonight we're asked that you formally appoint her, and so she can serve until the November elections and get through the end of December. In the meantime, we are, we have posted the town clerk position, are receiving applications, and as I mentioned in the last meeting, I'll be following up with getting interviews started shortly. I just wanted to give you a quick bio about Rosemary. She was a Sudbury Town Clerk for 13 years before she retired in 2019, and then she served as the interim town clerk in Bedford, where she continues to work to help the town clerk's office and be a mentor. She'll be in our office two to three days a week, and of course even more for the days leading up to the elections. She already noted that today, she already had a very busy and productive day in the office and really enjoyed working with Alana, so it's really exciting to have her here.
What's her last name?
Harville.
Rosemary, H-A-R-V-E-L?
H-A-R-V-E-L-L, yeah.
All right. Would you like me to make a motion, or somebody?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we appoint, as the interim town clerk, Rosemary Harville. Anything else I need to add?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just a quick question, will the other aspects, like some of the changes that were made around, I forget hours and things, will everything else continue as they were?
Yes, as the interim, yeah, and so...
Or do you anticipate some additional changes might be made when she comes in?
For this, for this new, no, it'll be similar, like it's only limited hours, up to 500 hours total, and not, no later than after December 31st, so it'll happen.
And I know some of the election, that was for the last election, right? There were some...
There, yeah, with the exception of time needed for election.
And will that all be redone for the next election, or was that, did we approve stuff for both elections last? I'm trying to...
Oh, you mean the time?
Yeah.
We haven't done anything for the November...
Okay, so that, okay, thank you.
So we'll have to consider that, like for the...
Oh, for the hours.
Early voting and the...
Yes, yes, so that will be proposed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
Thanks.
All right, so we'll move on to a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. We have a hearing at 7:15, but we have to wait till 7:15 for the hearing, so in the interim, is there anything in the town administrative report, perhaps, that we could start to fill some time?
Let's take a look.
So part of this is just for the audience here, is that we have an agenda, and there are certain things, like a public hearing, and a public hearing has to be properly noticed so that everybody in the community knows about it, so that there's nothing secretive or hidden about it. And because of that, we have to know when that will take place, and so we have it on a specific time, so if you wanted to listen in on that, or comment on it, or something, you would know this is the time to do it. So I can't start it early and then have someone walk in and say, "Oh, I didn't get to hear it," or "see it," or "talk about it," and so that's why we have to keep to our schedule of what we're doing.
So I'll just briefly touch upon a few things that Ryan wanted to mention. We are now going to update the first floor employee spaces. As you know, the second floor had a lot of movement, so now there's some availability in the town clerk's office, so we've been meeting with COA and the town clerk, clerk's office, to see how we can best fit employees that makes more sense for the services that they need. So that will be coming down the pipeline by the end of the fall and into the, at the end of the calendar year. Human resources update, I don't have a lot right now. As I mentioned, we're collecting the town clerk applications, and then we are also collecting applications for the facility, facilities technician position, as well as DPW heavy equipment operator, which we want to make sure is ready to go for the snow. So we'll continue with that process. We're also finalizing the internal application process for the social services manager position, so if we get an internal hire, we'll have that person be appointed at the next Select Board meeting. And so, and then special Fall Town Meeting, that'll be talked, we'll be talking about that shortly. This is the status of some of the potential articles, where Ryan is. Looks like most of them are now targeting for the annual town meeting, so that will be discussed more in the next subject. We are really excited. We're having town hall in Center Park on October 2nd. So this will not only just be the town hall, employees like myself there to chat away, but also we'll have public safety, they'll have DPW trucks, police cruisers, fire trucks, so it's a great way for people to get together, meet folks in town, and also get to see some cool vehicles in action. So we're really excited about that. Any questions or anything? So it's to get everybody out of town hall in front of folks.
Will it be a dunk tank for Ryan?
There should be. Yeah, yeah.
For the, what was the baseball, the speed of your throw?
Who's volunteering for that?
Ryan is, he's not here, so we'll...
Right, we'll volunteer him. Now, is there a time yet on that, Aubrey?
Yes, I think there, there's a couple times I can confirm for you. I think there's a morning time and then an afternoon time, and I'll show you that. I've been sharing it on social media as well, so it'll be, so then people can kind of, so employees as well can kind of pick which time they can kind of be available, but it should be great. The bog house, it's resetting to a storage status. He's working to secure the building and put together two to three year storage plan while you're investigating options.
I hope he doesn't take that long.
Municipal Facilities Committee will develop and recommend the final stage of this interim plan and bring it to the Conservation Commission and the Select Board for a final decision. And then the budget, continues to work with capital planning, potential, you know, to determine potential facilities projects for the next five years, and this is also considering road repairs and other necessary horizontal construction, and this will have an updated capital plan to present to you and the Finance Committee on October 8th. And then we are recommending that the Select Board recognizes and proclaims the month of October 2024 as Concord Carlisle Foundation Month in Carlisle. This recommendation would recognize the vital role the foundation plays in the life of our town and allow the Select Board to wish members of the foundation success in reading, reaching their annual campaign fundraising goal. So that'll be a motion that will be...
Can we just do that?
We do a motion now?
Absolutely.
So I move the Select Board recognizes and proclaims the month of October 2024 as Concord Carlisle Foundation Month in Carlisle.
Second.
Is there any questions, discussion?
I mean, I was, I know the CCC, like, community chest is the thing people know. I hadn't actually heard, like, if he says the foundation, are they going to know what that is? People generally know it as the community chest.
No, this is something else.
It's not the community chest. I thought it's the parent of the community chest.
Oh.
Oh, oh gee. So I think it should be the name people know, which is community chest, in my opinion.
It originated from the community chest, correct?
That's what you give to, right? That's the guy that thing you all the time. So I, I don't know, I think it would mean more if he said community chest. Nobody knows what the, I don't...
What does the proclamation say?
It was founded in 1947 as the Concord Carlisle Community Chest to provide support for community human service organizations.
Right, so maybe parenthetically or something, we should change it.
Or add, add next to it.
Yeah, well, formerly known as or otherwise known as, yeah.
I just wondered though, if they provided the proclamations, didn't they?
Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't mean anything to people who read it, if they don't know what it is.
Well, that's the first sentence of it, is, says, whereas, the Concord Carlisle Foundation was founded in 1947.
But what is it saying? Therefore, we proclaim...
Here's your controversy.
...under that part.
Let it be known, the Select Board recognizes and proclaims the month of October 2024 as Concord Carlisle Foundation Month in Carlisle to recognize the vital role the foundation plays in the life of our town and to wish members of the foundation success in reaching their annual campaign fundraising goal.
Can we, can we say the Carlisle Community Chest plays in our?
Concord Carlisle.
The Concord Carlisle Community Chest.
Should you say Carlisle.
Instead of that second foundation?
Well, see, the thing is, they also serve the needs of our neighbors, including communities for restorative justice, Carlisle Council on Aging.
Right, but that, oh, unless I'm incorrect, when you get the letters from...
Yeah.
...Group C, it lists all those organizations, but they go under the umbrella of community chest, so I've just never heard of it.
I wonder if they're trying to change something, though.
Yeah.
Somebody did make a note, sorry, that the organization has changed its name, that they believe, so, not sure.
Did they change its name to Foundation?
I guess so.
Yeah, it's now being called Concord Carlisle Foundation.
So would they be upset if we, it's our proclamation, right? So we could say what we want, but would they be upset if we parenthetically refer to their former names? So...
Well, they're probably working on trying to get...
Well, again, it says, right at the front, the first sentence says, "It was founded as the community chest."
Fair enough, huh? I withdraw my...
I think that this, if this makes it in the mosquito, is going to be, you know, enough to spur everyone's knowledge of...
I'm just trying to help them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, example number one, right?
Okay, that's fine.
For those, okay, so we had a motion, we had a second...
We've had discussion.
We've had discussion, anything? We're just going to leave it as it is, and, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right.
Change it to the Carlisle Concord?
All right, it is...
Carla.
It's 7:15, so why don't we have our public hearing? Do we have to open?
Yes.
Can someone move to open that, please?
I move we open the public hearing for, let me get my...
You want me to?
Yeah.
Hey, Jay, she's got it right here.
Okay, I move to open the public hearing pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Paragraph 13. I move to open the public hearing for the grant of location petition submitted by N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, to install plus or minus five feet of electrical conduit in West Street.
Okay, I second that.
Great. Okay, so now they, the...
Do we have anybody?
...hearings, do we have any representative? I thought at one point we were going to have a representative.
Hi, Jackie Duffy from EverSource.
Wonderful, can you please just introduce yourself again, and we'd love to have you just give a quick presentation on this.
I'm Jackie Duffy from EverSource, how are you tonight?
Great, thank you.
Hi, good.
Good, great. I would like to install approximately five feet of conduit on West Street. We're looking for a grant of location, and this is to provide electric service to 433 West Street.
Okay, I've asked this before, this is, is, is any of this five feet in pavement on the road, or is it all in the shoulder in the right of way?
Ms. Duffy?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you...
Sue, she's asking a question. No, it's fine, if you could just...
Yes, it's on the shoulder.
On the shoulder, okay.
Yes.
I have no problems with this, and we've done, we've, we've given a number of, of these location for the same...
Kind of thing.
Kind of thing, so...
Okay, is there any, any other comments, questions from the board? Otherwise, I'll open it up and see if there are any public comments?
No comments.
Are there any people and members of the public who want to ask a question or make a comment on this? All right, seeing none, then I'd suggest we, oh, go ahead, Kim.
I move to close the public hearing in that case, for the grant of location petition to install conduit in West Street.
Second.
Okay.
And I further move to approve the petition and plan submitted by N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install approximately five plus or minus feet of conduit in West Street. Said work is necessary to provide electric service to 453 West Street, Carlisle.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion by the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So can I further?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So for the benefits of the scouts, as you mentioned, the hearing had to occur at a specific time, and this seemed pretty dry, because it's, they want to put five feet of cable in a location, and it seems benign. But there are times where somebody wants to do something, like build something on the end of their house, or erect something, and the neighbors might not like that, and so they have to be notified. They're called the butters, they could be next door or nearby.
Hundred feet.
And they, they would want to know, and they would want to actually come to the hearing, and they would want to raise their hand and say, "That blocks my view of that oak tree," or, you know, "It's going to cast a shadow," or "I don't like it," or "It's ugly," or whatever. And, you know, this is a public body, we, we work for the town, we don't work for ourselves. So we listen to all the inputs, and if we think, or not just we, there are other boards, other boards, similar thing happens, and they may decide to hold on, or check with council, or send them back to revise the plans. I mean, that's how, in our opinion, at least good government works, that the people have a voice, it's through these bodies that are elected or appointed, and there's a process, it's clear, and then if you object as a citizen, and you have the right, if you have the standing, you, like a neighbor, you have the right to object to it. And you can't be across town and say, "I object just because..."
Oh, you can. You can make comments, you just may not have legal standing.
You don't have standing, right, yeah.
But those are, those are oftentimes zoning board of appeals, other types of things, but these are just, many times, just general public questions. And just quickly, for those online, if you can't tell, we have Troop 135 here from the Carlisle Boy Scouts, and they're participating, working on a merit badge for this, a communications merit badge, so that's why we're talking about this.
Thank you.
Everybody can learn.
If you have any, if you have questions, just raise your hand. You don't have to sit there, it's not that formal, really.
Right, that's true.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move on to talk about the special Fall Town Meeting.
Oh, let's.
All right, well, David, why don't you?
You want to go back to the TA report, just to look at that list?
Want to just finish that, sure.
No, not finish, I was just thinking that one section where he's listed the items that we've all said could wait till spring, but might be good review.
Yeah, sure, hold on, let me...
Yeah, and before we close them, the warrant would be nice.
Right.
To talk about it, yeah, yeah.
All right.
And for your benefit, our town administrator is Ryan McLean. Ryan is, this week, he's taking a couple days doing a professional development, so he's working, he's at a conference, learning new skills, and in his absence, we have our assistant town administrator, Aubrey, who is filling in, and so she's doing the work he would normally do.
And then some.
And then some, exactly.
Right. Okay, so we have the town...
So, yeah, we can, you want to, Aubrey, you mind just walking us through, or?
Sure, so we're going to target the town administrator bylaw that, you know, is now looking to target for the annual town meeting. Do you want me to just go through each?
Yeah, well, the accessory dwelling, yep.
Yeah.
And what the status of each?
Yeah, so it looks like the planning board's targeting for the annual town meeting for that as well, and then the tailings, I don't know too much, but it looks like it's, it's just not at a point to have that for the special.
Well, it's, we think it's maybe a minor enough issue that's not worth having a whole meeting for that.
And then changing the general bylaws for the Veterans and Celebrations Committee language, we just need more time to get that. And then the conservation restrictions transfer, more information, I believe is needed for that, so, yeah, so that's a part of it, too, is that none of them are large enough to need an entire Fall Town Meeting by themselves, right? So that's part of it.
Fall Town Meeting would involve a lot of preparation, it's a lot of expense as well for the town of Carlisle, but it does give everyone in Carlisle an opportunity to come and vote on specific things that, the way we govern our, govern our town, so it's really worthwhile to see. If you have the chance, you should actually come to the Spring Town Meeting, I just think you'd find interesting.
You guys all know about town meeting? You're all aware of that? Anybody ever been to a town meeting?
Ask Barney.
Adults don't count.
So Barney, I have a question for you, for the communities.
CPC?
Yeah, and that is, I know that the, there was one grant that was asked, asked for an extension till December, thinking that they were going to have town meeting in November. I'm not sure they're going to make it, and so the...
May have to come back for another extension.
Yeah, but, and of course, it'll be beyond the extension that they already asked for.
Right.
Just so you know that, and I guess the question is, for you, are there any other, have there been any other applications or people that were looking to do grants for CPC?
Nobody submitted anything official, but when we had the meeting with various boards and committees, you know, and asked for input about CPC funding and potential projects, there were, the Recreation Commission brought up possibly doing some kind of a, requesting money to figure out the Dimon Park and the field, and the idea of a splash pad, you know, some help trying to sort that out. And then the Conservation Commission had also raised a question about the Greeno Pond, not Greeno Pond, sorry, Cranberry Bog, the other dam that has not yet been repaired, but that dam, we need to wait until we get the results of the hydrologic study, so we know better what should be done to that dam.
So that one could wait until spring.
Yeah, so they both, and the Recreation Commission was fine to wait until the spring as well.
So if it's only that one.
This is, we're talking about the Community Preservation Act Committee, which is a group in Carlisle that is elected by the Select Board, or appointed, I guess, by the Select Board is the right way to say it, and there's a state program called the Community Preservation Act that, where part of our property taxes, a percentage of those, 2%, goes into a fund, and then the state matches it, it can be anything from, you know, 80% match, which used to happen in the early days of the program, to as low as this last year, it was 17%. And anyway, all that money is available for making community improvements around recreation housing, open space, and the fourth one.
Historic.
Historic, thank you, historic preservation.
So at this point, I'd like to move to close the special town meeting warrant, our hash for our motion, but just to explain what that means. So anyone can get enough signatures and have a warrant put on, or an article put on the town meeting. So if you wanted to change something in Carlisle, if you said, "I really want to see a bylaw change," or "I want to see something happen," or "The town spend money on something," you could get enough signatures, and then you could present this during this period for the town warrant. The town warrant, then, once it's closed, we don't allow any more people after that time period to put things before the town, it actually comes before the Select Board, and then we decide about the warrant, about the town meeting, what to put on the town meeting, from there. But that's a process, but right now, what we're, I'm suggesting is, because there's not, well, we're going to close it anyway, today was the day we said was going to be the last day of the warrant, so I'd just ask for a motion, and then we'll go into the next.
I move to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second?
Okay, no more, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, so now the next step is, we have to decide, do we want to hold a Fall Town Meeting? We initially thought we had a number of articles and items that could come before us for the Fall Town Meeting. Typically, the town of Carlisle, we've tried to reserve the Fall Town Meeting for things that are less budgetary and more changes, maybe in zoning bylaws, or in, I don't know, just, just changes in our operating procedures of the town. And we had a number of things come forward, but some of them didn't get fully developed, and others were relatively minor. We talked about tailings, which was, just has something to do with our accounting and how we account.
If we give you a check and you don't cash it, that's a tailing.
That's right.
And we have to chase you down to say, "Cash your check."
Right. So, but that doesn't warrant an entire town meeting, I don't think. So I would ask for a motion to cancel the.
Move to cancel the special town meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 12th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
I think it's the right decision for sure.
Okay. I just also want to say that we did have a governance committee and they're the ones that have recommended that we do have two town meetings a year. We have had two town meetings on some occasions, but in this case, we just weren't able to gather enough things to make a second town meeting. And it's, that doesn't mean that next year we won't try to plan forward for it.
I'm not sure they said have to. They said you should prepare, you should allow for two.
Right.
And you should, and as Travis just said, let's see what we might have. In theory, it's a good opportunity, as you said, to clear non-financial things, give them their own space. And if it was a significant event, you would have a little more breathing room in that. And secondly, there are some things that may not be able to wait a year. So you have the opportunity to have a half-year gap. So I think their recommendation was fine, but you shouldn't have a meeting just to have a meeting.
Just to have a meeting. Right. So that's what I was trying to. Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. I'll do a roll call, or I mean, a voice vote. All in favor of canceling the special town meeting?
Aye.
None opposed. All right. So we're not going to have a fall town meeting.
Remove it from.
All right. It's 7:30. It, on our agenda, we're going to do a human resources presentation. I think Aubrey, you're going to lead that.
I am.
Great.
Hold on one second. So, so I have, have been here for just shy of two years. And before that, you know, my position did not exist. So I am now officially the Assistant Town Administrator slash HR Director. So very long title, but one of the big goals of my position was to formalize HR. So there's still more work to do, but there has been a lot of great progress. Ryan has been really fantastic in leading this. So I wanted to give an overview of what that looked like and also to touch upon what next steps I'll be asking for in this fall from the select board to move some other policies forward. So one of the first things that I've been working on is to standardize the office schedule, standardized trade, training evaluation, step increases and accruals. So we've been working on performance evaluations, as you're well aware. We now have standardized those, so all employees have a performance evaluation. Their step increases are tied to that evaluation. And if they meet, you know, their standards, then they can, they will get that step increase July 1st. So that has standardized that. Just before I came, became standardized for everybody to have one step increase every year instead of one every three years. So that really made a great pay equity. We've been working very hard to make sure any new roles or changing roles fit within the classification plan and they make sense, that they make sense compared to other roles in town and then similar roles in comparable towns. So it's been a lot of work, but we've really made sure that that all fits. And that's really been a huge asset. We have a formal offer letter that we send to everybody and, you know, formal start, we, you know, starting wage. So it's, it's been really fantastic. One of the things that I'll be asking again this fall is more about the town hall hours. So we have, we've needed some clarity for staff, in particular, now that the tax bills are getting sent only twice a year, even though there's, to let folks know, the bills will still, you still have to pay every quarter, but they won't be mailing it every quarter. Part of that is that they are required to have the town hall hours on that mailing. So the treasurer collector is asking for confirmation as soon as she can find out so that they can make sure that they're complying with the law, but also there's consistency. And she made some valid points that kind of went in, that aligned with some of the memos I've submitted about most towns in the Commonwealth now have one later day. So if we were a little more consistent with other towns where residents are able to pay taxes on that later day, that would be good. And then also making sure that all the town, the office hours are the same for everybody in town hall. So if a resident comes in to be able to, they were able to do all, everything they need to do on one visit, right? So having that consistency will be very helpful. And now that we also have the new security system, making sure that everybody can enter and exit whenever they need to, of course, exit when they need to, but enter whenever they need to, will also be good. So I think that that will be a big, an ask that, you know, I'll be following up on again this fall, especially on behalf of the treasurer collector, to make sure that she's able to have the proper hours listed on the mailing for the tax bill.
When does she need that?
So I, she wrote to me. She.
I think one going back.
Because one's going to go out soon before.
The next one will be sent in early December for the payments that are due February 1st and May 1st. So we would need to know by early December what those hours would be that would go up and through May, May 1st.
So we'll have to get that on the agenda. It will be noted.
Or sooner than early November, December, because she needs to get it printed, right?
Right.
So maybe that November, one of those November meetings.
Yep.
Yeah.
As it relates to the later TA discussion, do we have the authority as a select board
to set those hours as needed to, that could standardize it for all the services that a resident may require? And if not, is, is the idea is we will make a request to do that to the other departments?
So my understanding of that, that is an authority of the select board.
It is an authority. It is.
I know that the by law.
We control the actual physical structure.
The hours, but we can't make certain.
We can't, we can't tell the department, oh, you know, you.
Okay.
So we could open the building at eight and say, "The hours of the building are town hall are eight." But that department, you know, because we don't have a TA by law that would give the authority.
So when, in sub, in the bullet three, standard office schedule for town hall employees.
Right.
It's not really, what we're talking about is town hall hours.
Right.
Right.
Although the goal will.
The ultimate goal, but for the, tactically, for December, we need to set town hall hours.
Right.
The discussion of who sets hours for employees is, that's a bigger.
That's a bigger question.
Bigger question. Okay. So that's what you meant, or that's what's meant by the third bullet point? Or is that just the larger discussion under, under point one?
I think that's the larger discussion, but let's set that aside and say, what, for the ones we can tell, what should it be?
Well, it sounds like we can set the hours.
More productive discussion.
We'll have that discussion in the future. Let's keep going with Aubrey's.
Yeah. Sure. So that's one of the first asks I'll have. So with online HR, trying to make sure that everything is as digitized as possible. Not everything in the HR onboarding process can be digitized. For example, the Middlesex retirement system still requires her copy to be hand-signed, everything so, and witnessed. So that's a big part of it. I just went through their training last week, so I know that is the current requirement. But I've been working on making sure that HR records are still consolidated to secure location. And then that's the future records will be digital. We're still working on that. I'm still working on getting more digital for the onboarding. More of the other systems are going online, so we're trying to get the health insurance system and everything online and also making sure that all resident, or employees are aware that they can access all this information through the app and online. We already have integrated Bamboo HR. Kelly, the town accountant, has been a huge asset in making this work. So a lot of the employees, and not on the school side, but in the rest of town hall, are on it. There's some that it just doesn't work with how they're paid. It just doesn't fit into the system. But, but there's a huge chunk of employees that are now in Bamboo HR. And so that has streamlined so much. You can also, anybody can see who's in and who, you know, who's out sick and everything. So that's been very, very, very helpful. Your, you request your time off, so time off has now been streamlined and tracked a lot better. So that's been also helpful for, you know, including when you need to know who's in the office when people are asking. So it's been a huge shift for folks and it's a really easy system. So people in general have been really appreciative of it and it's, it's been a very huge asset for us. Talked a lot about succession planning. We're still working on that. The next step is to send a survey out to all employees and then follow up with department heads on, you know, making sure that cross-training's happening, that, you know, there's a plan for when folks leave, like what does that look like? Are we prepared for that, right? At any level. So that is still working in progress this fall for personnel policy updates. We've already done some of them, but I will continue to update these. So one of the asks, I will be asking is, what do you think the best process will be for these policy updates? There are a lot in the pipeline that I will be proposing. Some are coming from the town accountant, some are coming from the town administrator, some are myself and so forth. And, you know, how would you like me to present that to you? What kind of, how involved do you want to be in that process for approving? Because it will be ultimately you that would be approving a policy update and the goal is to have a new one as of July 1st of 2025.
Approve the, you want, your question, Aubrey, is, how much input do we want on the policy?
Policies, so.
Or the actual plan of.
So for the, and do you want each of the policy, policy that I have, like presented individually, or do you want it just all in one whole, all the changes at once?
Are you talking policies generally or just succession planning policies?
Uh, no, this is not the.
Yeah, you're the next one.
Yeah.
Just any policy.
Yeah, yeah.
How much, how big is the?
It's, it's big. It's, yes. It's very vast of what we're looking to change.
Like hundreds of, like dozens?
I wouldn't say, yeah, not dozens, but I would say a good, close to dozen, if not more. We have, I've been accumulating.
Is it, is there, is it part of an employee handbook or is it its own thing?
Yes. So it's, it's, it has the policies and procedures, like that whole.
If I'm an employee, I get it electronically, I guess.
Yes, you electronically receive.
A handbook of, I have all the policies.
But these are changes, excuse me. These are changes in existing policies or additions or both?
It'll be both.
Okay.
Yep. So the one that was already approved that we just need to add to the next one is like veteran, the, the military leave policy, right? That, that was already approved and that just needs to be added. So do you want a process like that where we approve each one and then we have it ready to go and then I have just the whole packet?
We had, we had done that previously, like with the tailings that we mentioned earlier. We had a, a list of five or six policies. We went through them and I think you have to have enough to have a critical mass. And I don't think you just have one every meeting. I think that, personally, but I don't know what the board.
Well, one, you know, one possibility is to deputize somebody like Kate or, or Barney, who have, I believe, both of you were involved in drafting at the beginning, right? To kind of go through them in a, not subcommittee, it's not really right. And it could be open meeting, but just to go through them in detail without tying us up and just give you a recommendation and then we could do it in the larger. I think we should bless it as a committee and the select board should bless it.
And having been involved with it and kind of resurrecting it, because it was, you know, wasn't even really, the last time around, I'd be interested in seeing what the changes are personally.
Yeah.
And you're more familiar with the baseline, too. So you would know.
Yeah.
But maybe the whole board wants to take a look at.
Yeah, I would be more inclined. I know we, we are talking about a TA by law, but in the TA by law, we're still retaining authority over our policies because that's how we run the town or how we're running employees. And I, I think that's worthwhile for us all to just see. I know it takes time and.
Well, no, but it's a two, what I'm proposing is a two-step where some body and fender work is done by a couple of people who are, take the time to dig in. That's what worked pretty well, as I mentioned in the past, at the school board level, at both school boards that I've been on, region and the local one. It worked pretty well. Like if you have the time and the interest, you kind of dig down, you spend time with Aubrey, maybe make some changes. We are cumbersome as an editorial body, partly because of the OML rules. Like we can't do it in between meetings because it's, you know, collective, what do you call it, deliberation? So it's inefficient. It's not like at work where you circulate drafts, people have comments, and then you're done, right? We have to do it in like this public session. So it, it does, in my opinion, it's, I agree with you, Travis. We should absolutely have the final review at the select board level. And if other people have comments, they certainly can make them. But if a lot of vetting has been done by a couple of other people, it just saves time. We have a lot to do.
No, I mean, I think you're talking, I think it's a little bit of a semantics where Kate would be involved in kind of the creation of the final draft and then we would review something that's at least been reviewed by one of us.
That's fine. I just want to.
We can put side comments about, "This is a change, that's a change." Maybe.
Yeah, yeah. Just a change. Yeah. So we can review it knowing it's at least gone through one set of eyes and then, yeah.
That's fine. I just don't, I, I think we need to, or at least if, we'll schedule it in two, maybe two meetings.
Oh, yeah.
So you have a chance to read this.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Everyone on the select board reads it, goes through. If you have comments about the policies, you can propose your comments and then they'll go back and do one turn of it. As long as we have a process, but I don't, yeah, I don't think it's a problem starting it. I mean, can you do that with open meeting law? Have one.
She can ask anybody to help.
Yeah, I can ask anybody to, to help me with the draft.
So for this, for, for you guys, OML, open meeting law, we're only allowed to discuss things, even discuss them, in a public meeting that's posted. So we can't just get together informally and do work together. We, if we want to discuss anything, we have to post it publicly so people can see it at least two business days ahead of time. So it makes it, there's reasons for doing that, so everything is open and transparent. But obviously for things like this, where you just say, "Well, why can't you just do it offline?" Because we can't. It's open meeting law. So that's what we're talking about.
And just a quick question. Have you involved anybody from council's office in this? Because I know in the past, we had Donna Brewer look over sort of final versions.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, they'll be part of that process as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, so what I've been doing since I've started is accumulating the different policy changes, either that have already been approved or we are looking to change so that we can just have one updated addition. Since the last one was August 2021, so then it can be July 2025. So it's not updating too much.
Yeah, yeah.
Boy, it was not that long ago.
I know. I know. About 2021.
Takes them that long to finish and then by the time it's done, it's time to start again.
So does that give you enough guidance?
Yes, yes, thank you. So I can work with one or two folks to help me with that and a lot of staff members will be helping as well. be helping as well.
And again, your goal is to get them all done by July? Is that the, in terms of between now and then?
In advance of that, so then you have time to review it.
Really June, right, approved.
Yeah, approved by June, so then the official version can be, you know, in the summer.
July 1.
But have that presented to you in advance in the spring at the latest. And so if there's any changes or requests or anything, we can look into that. And then benefits research. So part of that's also been, in the fall, I reinstated the insurance advisory committee. And so they were very helpful in, in looking and reviewing what our current benefits are. And so we've opened that window. So we've let Maya know that we are annually going to be revisiting, you know, our benefits and what options we may have. And it might be options within their own, their own options or it could be elsewhere. And then also just beyond just health insurance, what options we have for benefits. So the goal is to have this insurance advisory committee be a continuous committee and to be reviewing it and then providing recommendations to the select board every February.
Who's on the committee?
So it's determined by law, certain staff members and it's a certain criteria of who's on it.
I was on it for the select board the last time.
Yeah.
And the chair of the FinCom was on it.
And then, you know, a representative from each union, so.
Well, it wasn't him.
Oh, it was Lynn?
Lynn was on it. And she was actually great because she knew a lot about.
You're going to change your makeup or you, is there rotation?
It's generally guided by law, so it, I try not to deviate too much, but you know, a representative from each union.
Lynn's not on FinCom anymore.
Right, exactly. So it'd be, you know, ahead of the FinCom and everything. So it, it's really about the position rather than the person.
So there will be a select board rep?
I believe so. So the law doesn't outline select boards in particular, but it's up to us. It's a little, like it says, you know, at minimum, here are some folks you need. So each union needs to have a representative that the union just chooses and so.
So this is only in, like medical, health insurance? It's not insurance broadly, like property casualty?
No, no, yeah. So it's, it's, and it's, it's, it's not open, subject to open meeting law. It's, it's just for them. So it's a unique committee, but it's important that.
And do you have a benefits consultant?
Yes, so we have folks that can, that present and everything, so. Yeah, so this past year, they did not make a recommendation to change anything, but, but they are, they were looking into what future options there were.
They were given a choice and they opted not, they could have saved actually some money, but there were bigger, you know, there were pros and cons and the unions decided not to opt for the changes.
Yep, we're about out of time on your thing. Is anything last?
Oh, just quickly, it says HR policy handbook, but it really should be procedure, just working on consolidating HR processes along with public safety, school, everything. So making sure it's more streamlined with everybody. So I am continuing to work on that. And then wellness, just taking advantage of Maya that we go through because there's actually a lot of free options through them and making sure that any grants that they offer, that we're taking advantage of those.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate the update, yeah.
Yeah, and also a lot of great work's been done.
I was going to say, I want to thank you for all the work because.
When Barney and I were.
Tell us about what it was like in the old.
The old days.
It wasn't going so well.
There was no HR and nobody even knew what HR was.
Right, you know, because it really has to be a staff function and it's not really a board function and we were trying to do a staff job and we weren't doing so hot.
I want to commend Aubrey for doing a great job, but also for, especially Kate and Barney. But Kate really led the charge years ago when we were in the wilderness and, you know, took it on. It was hard because there was not a lot of proactivity going on. So thank you for starting it.
All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the Complete Streets presentation. I believe we have Representative Matt, are you here from NICH?
Hey, girl.
Hi.
How's it going?
Great, thanks. So.
Great.
You're, you've got the floor, Matt. What would you like to tell us about?
Great, so Ryan asked me to present to the select board a presentation that I'm going to be presenting to the safety committee next week. It's about complete streets and kind of roadway safety and all of it on kind of how roadway projects are done and then kind of an open discussion on kind of, you know, the challenges Carlisle has with complete streets types of projects. And also kind of going over the MassDOT Complete Streets funding program and everything that is involved with that. So if you go to the next slide, please. So as I know, I'm going to go over some typical roadway projects and type of safety studies and roadway studies, then kind of complete streets and what that really means to Carlisle. The graphic on the right is a graphic I always like to show and it comes from MassDOT. And it just kind of shows the importance of trying to slow down speeds and provide awareness to multimodal accommodations. It really kind of takes into grasp the difference between 20 miles an hour and 40 miles an hour for roadway speeds with, the biggest thing on the top, you can see the risk of pedestrian fatality and serious injury goes from 18% to 77% just in those, you know, speed ranges. Then also the cone of vision. So just kind of really trying to explain the importance and benefits of slowing down.
So Matt, can you give us the context of the percentages? It's what over what?
So that is the percentage of, if a, let's say, if I was taking a pedestrian was hit, the risk or percentage that they would get a fatality or a serious injury or they were hit.
Oh, if they were hit. I see, okay.
Oh, well, faster.
Yeah, so just trying to bring this really home, you know, and we're talking about safety, we're talking about people's lives, so.
I would say also, there's the larger, the faster you're going, the larger the percentage or the likelihood that you're going to hit somebody because you don't see them.
Well, that's what the graphic, the cone of vision would suggest that, which I agree. So it's a little bit, I would just suggest that there should be, I don't know, it seems like it should be more the odds of.
We have some, we have some budding young drivers here. I think it's.
Not like 77%.
Work to the wise.
Yep, they said this is a MassDOT graphic in their Complete Streets guidance and then just kind of trying to sell, you know, that we're here talking about this. And I apologize, I actually completely forgot to introduce myself. I'm Matt Saltz, for those who don't know me, I'm project manager at NICH. Been working with Ryan on a number of projects in town as part of the on-call contract we have with them. Most recently, I kind of led the design and the construction of the Westford Street culvert replacement and then also the pavement management program. So various different things that I've worked with Ryan on. So if you haven't my name, sorry, I forgot to introduce myself.
Thank you. All right.
So yeah, next slide, please. So kind of talking about safety a little bit, you know, 10, 15 years ago, the safety approach in the engineering world was always saying, you know, we're going to model all our design based on perfect human behavior. We're going to prevent all types of crashes regardless of the type of crash or the severity. And that saving lives is a very expensive process. But now this new approach to safety is Vision Zero where it's really all about policy and looking at the individual road users and knowing that traffic deaths can be preventable. And in our design analysis, we more think about, you know, what, what the humans are actually going to be doing in each mode and not assume everyone's going to stay in their traveling all the time, no matter what, and act as like perfect robots. And instead of focusing on just preventing all collisions, it's more of a focus on preventing fatal and severe crashes. So a minor fender bender, you know, I hate saying this type of approach is, you know, more okay than a fatality or severe crash. And we do that kind of like when we go through our crash ratings and give it more weight to fatalities or severe crashes and really looking at those crashes rather than just a, you know, a fender bender for say. Not saying those are important, but really trying to limit those fatalities and severe crashes and types of designs that could lead to those. So just kind of wanted to kind of get that somewhere in the background. Next slide, please. So for those of you who don't know typical roadway process, Ryan kind of asked me to give kind of some background on how we take it from just an idea all the way through construction. So typically we start with some sort of study, we're just trying to outline our goals, demonstrate either a problem or a purpose of the project. From there, we'll take it to the next step where we start looking at a concept design where we'll demonstrate, yeah, this is actually buildable. If it is, these are the challenges that permitting the right-of-way needs, environmental needs, that we'll need to do it. And then try to set us up for some sort of funding source and whether it's capital funds, a grant, federal grant, state grant, you know, various types of projects. That ultimately to the design where we really look at the funding, public engagement, permitting, cost, survey, easements, all those things that go into it, all the really technical aspects. Then it goes up to bid and then ultimately construction. So I just kind of want to give that high-level overview in terms of how things are kind of done. Next slide, please. And if there's any questions in between, just please interrupt me. A lot of this is kind of background until we get to the MassDOT and to the Streets part, which I think is what really Ryan wanted me to focus on a little bit. So some example engineering studies, when you're talking about roadway and safety improvements. One of the more popular ones is a road safety audit, which is actually, MassDOT leaves a lot of these. It's really to make the state eligible or a project eligible to receive federal funds through a highway safety improvement program. And with road safety audits, the meeting of not just the engineers in the town and MassDOT, it's really the fire, the police, any community advocates. What you do is you really look at an area roadway intersection, kind of pick apart everything that's possibly wrong with it, document that and then come up with solutions and everything's on the table type solutions, you know, what, what in a dream road would you have? And that's usually a basis for the design moving forward. So it really kind of looks at the crashes, the fire crashes, what the police are seeing, the fire seeing emergency response and then just kind of patterns out there. Then there's safety action plans. These are getting really popular with various municipalities because the bipartisan infrastructure law through the federal government is funding a lot of these with stipulating 80% of the federal government and then a 20% match. So those are getting really popular for towns to do a safety action plan. And then if you do that, then you're eligible for implementation funds through the federal government. And the types of various traffic studies, whether it's bottleneck, speed enhancement or crash mapping and corridor studies, looking at what type of cross-section you put on a roadway, you put sidewalks and bike lanes and make it multimodal. And then infrastructure assessment, pavement, culverts, garros, those type of things. And that screenshot on the right is, is from the Safe Streets for all that and how to create an action plan where it's really not just an engineering study, it's really a comprehensive process with the town and stakeholders in the town. And really, what's, what's the goal setting for the town in terms of safety? Do we want to, Vision Zero where all fatalities, you know, are preventable, we're going to ensure that, what are we going to do to do that? So it's really not just an engineering study, it's really with the town policymakers as well. So it's kind of a good comprehensive study and we could have a separate conversation about that, I just wanted to introduce that because they are getting popular around other municipalities and they issue about two or three grant rounds a year through the federal government, so. Okay, next slide, please. So I've been talking about Complete Streets and I'm going to start the next few slides talking about the MassDOT Complete Streets program, which has been around for eight, nine years now or so. So a complete street is one that provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes. So that's walk-in, bikers, transit users and vehicles. And not just for all modes, but all people, all ages and abilities. So accessible transportation solutions that increase mobility. And the MassDOT Complete Streets Funding Program provides technical assistance and construction funding to eligible municipalities, which Carlisle is. Next slide, please. So I'm not sure how many of you kind of are familiar with the MassDOT Complete Streets program. I know in Carlisle, it's been a little, the town went after some grants and I'll go through a timeline back in 2019, but they haven't recently. So how it essentially works is tier one, town has done this in 2018, they have to set a policy saying, we adopt the Complete Streets policy, we're going to look at multimodal solutions as part of our day-to-day projects and also any new projects we're doing. Then the town created a Complete Streets prioritization plan under previous town administrator where they created a list of projects, kind of wish lists of sidewalks or bike projects in town, kind of ranked them, said what's the challenges with them and threw some estimated costs on them. And then tier three is the actual implementation grants where you can go for up to $500,000 for construction only funding. And basically what you do is on your approved tier two plan, you pick what projects you're going to apply for construction, demonstrate to MassDOT that you're ready to go or will be ready to go. And then they'll, it's a reimbursable grant program for the construction. As I mentioned, it's $500,000 every four years in a rolling fiscal basis. So once you use up your 500, then the time clicks, you can either go after one grant for $500,000 or various grants over the four-year fiscal rolling period up to that 500K. And one other thing is a lot of, when this program first came out and I wasn't working with the town back then, we worked on the town center implementation, but the town can receive up to $38,000 to do their prioritization plan. And I'm not sure if the town previously did that, to hire a consultant to really dive deep and develop a plan and do some public engagement on it. And just one thing to note is roadway maintenance is not an eligible project. They really want to focus on implementing those multimodal solutions. What I've seen a lot of municipalities do is pair their pavement management program with a sidewalk project. So their chapter 90 is going to fund the paving and they're going to supplement the Complete Streets funds to do the sidewalk work or pedestrian improvements per se or bike improvements and this and that. So kind of using both grant programs or funding programs to, you know, get one project done.
Just, Matt, so I understand, what, the prioritization, what, what is that? That would be a consultant who would come in, interview people in town, trying to determine what, what should be the priorities and then present that? What, what's a typical?
More or less, yeah. So either the town could just develop it themselves and submit to MassDOT or sometimes do hire consultants to kind of look at it, you know, look at the existing infrastructure and demonstrate what kind of projects, you know, from an engineering background and then also interview people in town and come up with the type of projects they see. And then rank them in a non, you know, bodist way and say like, what projects would you get for the most bang for your buck? You know, what project is going to fill a 100-foot sidewalk gap to a library for say, right? Down a roadway where there's a missing sidewalk gap. Those type of things that have limited right-of-way and are fairly easy to construct and kind of looks at like 10 different criterias per se.
So the Complete Streets table that we've, we have from the work that was done, I guess, what, four or five years ago now?
Yep, if you go to the next slide, actually, it kind of brings up the timeline, which will, which will help me to talk about.
Well, what I was going to ask before you do that is that, so was that done the way you're describing, you just described?
I am not sure because we were brought on in 2019 to do the design of the tier three projects, which was the town center roundabout.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
A veteran Westford Street and the sidewalk. So I'm, I'm not actually sure how that was developed.
Somebody's got to rank next to it.
No, and there wasn't, I don't recall any budget specifically approved for a prioritization plan.
Yeah, no.
So maybe this was just done by the, by Luke and his committee.
Yeah.
But they put a priority. I mean, somebody, whether it was formal or not, there's a rank here, right?
They certainly did not get a consultant to help them.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say, you know, I've seen other lists where the town maybe, you know, put it together and the Carlisle one that was done in 2018 is pretty comprehensive. I remember when the last time they had like seven projects, you know, just like townwide striping, it was the most Vegas projects out there. They're putting them in a pigeonhole now to try to get funding, so. But MassDOT does encourage updates to that plan on any basis. You know, it doesn't have to just be one stagnant document, they want you to continually update it and kind of see what projects are new and ready, but.
Adopted before, you guys, in 18, you guys were on the board, right?
Yeah.
And was this formally voted, you guys? It says.
Yeah, this is the first time we've seen this.
Adopted by Board of Selectmen in 7/29, you don't believe that?
Well, we approved, no, I think that's right, the policy.
The policy, not this, not this list.
Not this, this list.
But it says prioritization plan, approved by MassDOT.
Yeah, yes, approved by MassDOT.
So it never came back to select board? That seems odd.
Yeah.
There, there were a lot of things that we didn't get to see in the day.
So you, you think, your recollection, it's only you two guys, right? So your recollection is Luke, or they presented a policy which you agreed to, then they went off and did a plan and sent it to MassDOT and that was that?
Yeah, and we got updates on the rotary project, but I don't.
Right, so these, these guys with check marks have been done?
Well, let's, let's let Matt get there. We're jumping the gun.
Yeah, yeah, so you guys have it approved tier two plan. Tier three in 2019, town submitted four projects, they only got funding for three of them, but if I remember correctly, all four were built as part of the town center improvements, which moved sidewalks, improving the, the roundabout there and some pedestrian crossings and also teeming up Bedford Road over there.
And East Street, yeah.
Yeah, East Street, yep, over on the far east side, yep. So, but now the town is eligible for up to $500,000 in construction funding since it's been, you know, you guys have been drawing down that in quite some time, so you're eligible for the full 500K. And as soon as you start drawing down that from that, you start clicking the fiscal four-year clock, right?
It's, Matt, it's 500 every four years?
Yeah.
Yes.
That'll go very fast.
So you can either use it all at once or spread it out over a few years per se?
Just make the check payable to town of Carlisle and we'll.
Well, by May 1st, I think we have to plan and we'll do that as a select board plan to have, you know.
Right, have it figured out, that's the next application.
Right, we're not going to make next week.
No.
Yep, so I put the deadlines here, so there is a deadline next week and then the following deadline in just May 1st. And that, that's every year they kind of have the same deadlines.
So you can, you can do it twice, you could actually propose twice a year?
You could. I think the next slide kind of lays out some more timelines in terms of how fast MassDOT was in this program. So if you were to submit in October 1st, you would hear back from MassDOT, your projects are approved within three months. And then after those three months, it takes another two months for them to issue a contract that you can actually then start construction. So the whole process takes about five months to actually get your, your dollars in hand.
August, September, October.
And I, I think that the question for the select board is, do we, we now have a safety committee, which is really involved in this, and do we kind of push this to them as, as they're, they're the ones kind of taking charge and then ultimately it'll have to be approved by us, but.
Right. I think this, I mean, a lot of good work was done here, so they don't have to reinvent the wheel. They can.
No, but they can reevaluate.
Build on this and reevaluate. And there'll be other things maybe, but yeah, sure. Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yeah, and they can obviously add to that Tier Two planning, get it resubmitted. If we're looking at it by May first.
Hold on a second. Matt, could you start over again on that last comment?
Yep. So let's say the safety committee is like, we want to update that Tier Two prioritization list. They can get that into Mass Dot and get that approved before the May 1st date. Those dates always, the Tier Two next deadline is April 1st. They always do that intentionally so you can get it in, approved, and then go right immediately, hit that May 1st deadline. So it kind of allows you to do that if, you know, you wanted to go and update a few projects that you wanted to go out with Tier Three funds. But if you're not going to go after a Tier Three grant for a project you're going to put on there immediately, it's, you don't have to go through that time crunch.
So, Matt, does that mean that things that are already on this approved list, the spreadsheet, that, they're Tier Twos already because Mass Dot approved them as Tier Twos?
Yep, correct. So any of those projects.
So if they're doing a project on this list, it'll get fast-tracked? Okay, it's good to know. And it's only if it's a new project, then it would be a Tier Three, okay.
Yeah, so I think if it is the consensus of the board, that Ryan had wanted to know, know if this is the direction we're headed with it, to the safety committee.
So would we, do you think we would, I mentioned that, can you suck down the whole 500 in your first application?
Yes, of course you can.
That's what we did for the Rotary project.
Plus, we added a whole bunch.
Because it may not, it may go away.
The ducks quack, feed them.
While you can.
So it'd be cheaper if you do it earlier than later.
All that, yeah.
But I guess my question is, if, let's say we just, you know, the safety committee accepts this list, but wants to reorder, reprioritize, what, how does that affect, you know, with, is that a big, a guillotine with Mass Dot? Or, I mean, let's say you got number seven, and you'd like to put it at number five.
Think of it as Tier Two, it's really.
Yeah. So Mass Dot doesn't care which project you go after for your Tier Three funds. I've been with municipalities, they went after one, two, and then 35, 36, and they got them all approved.
Okay. That's, that was the question. Okay, great.
They're okay with that. And they're also okay with minor scope changes on a project based on what's actually in that plan. They understand things change, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that application's really a narrative, high-level cost estimate, and then just a brief little checklist form. It's not an overbearing application. Like I said, it's more the timeline. The October 1st deadlines is pretty popular because it keys you up for construction next summer, whereas the May deadline you're looking at may be possibly early 2026 at this point, just this extra five months, and then you're looking at when your shovel ready for construction, you know, when's the best time to start construction. So that's all I wanted to communicate here.
I just have one more question. Oh, I guess I jumped the gun, never mind. When we get to the Mass Dot spreadsheet, I have questions about that. Okay.
Yep. Great. Next slide, please. So as you all know, Carlisle has a number of challenges. I mean, you know, you kind of think of the Complete Streets, you might think Gabriel Somerville, Boston, you know, they have space, and these roadways. Carlisle, as you know, just has a lot of narrow roadway curves, and it really is a lot of vegetation along the roadways, and these steep slopes that can be challenging. But with that, I don't want you to be discouraged because we can design solutions that are context-sensitive and do improve accessibility and safety in the town and make mobility better for residents and users. The other thing is, you know, Carlisle, after getting the paid advantage, we've kind of learned you guys have a lot of local roadways and only a handful of arterial roads through the town. I think those just kind of limit maybe where your project's going to be, because a lot of local roadways, in the eyes of design guidance, bicycles and pedestrians are almost expected to kind of share that road together because the volumes are so low. If you think of like a cul-de-sac-type roadway. So just kind of something to consider in being context-sensitive to Carlisle and in making sure whatever is in effect fits Carlisle's character. You're not going to force painted green bike lanes and bus lanes in Carlisle, just doesn't make sense. And then just, you know, a lot of environmental resource areas, which, you know, when we think about these projects and there's $500K, that's not a lot of money in construction. You all know that. You know, making sure we're finding projects that aren't going to require massive environmental permitting and are going to be relatively easy to construct. I think this is something that gets ranked into like the prioritization or what projects the town ends up going after. Just want to lay that out there. So the next slide was just the approved prioritization plan I just put into the slide, so we all had it here. And this just shows that one, two, three, and four are built. One, two, and four were approved by Mass Dot, and then number three was ended up being funded anyways by the town, since it just made sense we were there anyways. And I know there's been some talk in town about Pheasant Hill, the sidewalks along Concord Street.
Actually, more or less where you have the picture with the red house.
Exactly. Yep, we took that from our sidewalk.
Name that location.
Yep. So I know that's been kind of a topic, and I just wanted to say that it is on the list. It was a bigger project, but Mass Dot's okay, like I said, with minor scope changes. So I think that was number 17, or I don't know, it's like a little mark next to it, but.
Yeah, the orange mark on 17.
Yeah.
Concord Street Sidewalk.
So my question about this spreadsheet is about the kind of, yellow, on the right-hand side, five, there's five columns there. Total estimated project cost, the Complete Streets funding requested, and other funding. How good are these numbers anymore? If we did this in 18?
They're six, eight-year-old numbers, right?
And I guess the other question is, who provided those numbers?
That's what I was wondering, if we didn't have.
I can't speak on who provided them. I will say that Mass Dot's not going to look into those numbers. They were kind of used as more programming sense. They know prices of construction have been inflated drastically past COVID. And that's why as part of your Tier Three application, you need to provide actually not just a long sum cost estimate, but an itemized cost estimate. So how much cubic yards of excavation, how much gravel, how much pavement for sidewalk curving. You need to detail all that out in a cost estimate for them, so they can kind of understand, you know, is this cost realistic or not?
Okay, all right. Mostly to ask.
Are there further questions here?
Just, I'm looking through this, under the project origin and type. So when it says CS Needs Assessment, Complete Streets Needs Assessment, we don't know who did that.
That's kind of a blanket term as doing these plans where, you know, saying, hey, I looked at the town, and that's kind of our needs for the project, or what we think we need for the town. So yeah, that's not, typically not a formal report.
Okay.
Unless there was a formal report, which doesn't sound like this was the case in Carlisle.
Okay. And the environmental justice population, that's based on sort of equity of access for different populations? And so that's why it says no for all the Carlisle ones?
That comes from the federal government as part of different census tracts, and they look at minority income, minority income, language barriers. So communities that are, you know, that are, yeah, underprivileged, per se.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's the safety ADA accessible. There's little Xs in that column there, Complete Streets Needs.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the Mass Dot funding is kind of, they like projects that are close to schools and senior or town amenities. You know, they do have, you know, they want to know how many feet it is radius to those. They want to provide mobility connections that really are meaningful to a town and everyday users. The environmental justice isn't necessarily applicable to Carlisle as much, but they do like that for other communities. And they are looking at making sure it's not just for a ADA improvement project, but you're improving safety in other ways too. So that's kind of where those checkboxes come in on our spreadsheets. And this is actually an update, right? Their new spreadsheet has much more columns, so much more questions.
So in some, if I'm understanding this correctly, all of these projects that are, haven't been done yet, they've been, they've gone, they're considered Tier Two by Mass DOT, even though it's five years old?
Correct. Correct. There is no expiration date on a Tier Two, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. And so to, so the safety committee, what we'd be saying to them is, look at all these projects, and we're interested in a recommendation from them about what we should be applying for to make that May deadline.
Yeah. Or are there other projects, I don't know if we can get them to Tier Two status? No?
Not, I don't think this year, the, I don't think the safety committee would be prepared to get there.
Okay.
For additional projects?
Yeah.
I mean, there's 25 of these, they ought to be able to find something that they like.
I mean, unless something cropped up, I mean, like the North Road, North and Rutland, but I don't think it really comes under this because we decided to use a four-way stop.
This is sidewalks, or, you know, pathways, you know, other things.
Right.
I mean, what they could do, I guess if I were, if they were here, I would say, maybe take another look at sort of the common-use area. I don't know if it's a poll, or like a survey. I mean, the idea is to, right, to create, to alleviate the road, the narrow roadways for bikers and walkers, right? I mean, that's kind of at the core of it, is other people, let other people use the road in a less dangerous fashion. And we're such a, you know, non-sidewalky town, and that's a real issue with people that want to walk a bike. So I would, I mean, I would recommend to them, just without getting too detailed, maybe focus on, are the usage patterns still kind of the same as they were five years ago? And there's no reason they can't contact Luke or whoever, you know, pick their brains, right? Because most, a lot of these revolve around building sidewalks in certain locations. And that's big money if you're going all the way to Concord. I saw like a million dollars, right? So, I mean, if they kind of have a good understanding of where people want to walk, and then pick, I'm sure it's already on this list, like pick those.
It's just a question of, you know, they've ranked them already, and would we do those?
That's still right.
Or do we?
Yeah, exactly. So I think that's an agenda they could do in a few months, right? Yeah.
We will offload that to them.
Probably not the forum, but one question I have too is also, it seems like a lot of these projects are overbuilt for Carlisle. And I'm referring to like the Rotary when you pull into town, and there's like a sea of crosswalk signs, which I actually find more distracting.
I think that's because it's a state.
Right, that's what I mean. And I think it's also important for the safety committee to understand what the regulations are going to be in the construction, because I think in some cases, the solution that's implemented to adhere to whatever the requirements are may not fit that particular use case. Because again, I think like the Rotary is a great example where the improvements are good, but we have the sea of like crosswalk signs, which.
It's not in keeping with.
Well, I find it's distracting, actually, you know? And so I think that's just an interesting, and I'm assuming that's just prescriptive from the state.
Right.
Yeah. One thing I'm noticing is that, except for two of these items, everything's got an X in the safety. And the two items that don't are rebuilding a sidewalk, which is already there.
Which column are you looking at?
In the blue is a.
X means what? It is a safety item?
Yes, this is safety. There are no Xs anywhere in the bicycle mobility column. I'm wondering if we should, you know, if we should direct the safety committee to look for, or prioritize these needs in any way.
Can't be that none of them are. It's that maybe they didn't have that category when they did.
I think they can evaluate all of these. I think the task, I think, should be broad, and we'll see what they come up with.
It's probably only to cover two projects, Matt, so.
We do need to move on because we have Ethan waiting.
Okay. Just, sorry, one quick question, which is, and all of, well, any of these that are going by private property all require the legwork to be done around getting the right-of-way, right?
Yeah.
An easement or whatever, because we had to do that when the pathways came by our house. So that's another whole lengthy process.
Could be. Something for them to consider.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just say, you know, the Mass Dot Complete Streets Program, as you said, is really focused on pedestrian and multimodal, and there are other funding programs out there that maybe look at roadway safety as a whole more, and maybe prioritize that. It's more of a overall roadway safety action plan type study or analysis that kind of looks at, we use anything from intersection layouts to stopbar locations to different signage that includes multi-modal, so a little more comprehensive, you know, than narrow window in Mass Dot. So, you know, it's not the end-all, you know, type of study. It's just formatted for Mass Dot's funding requirements for the specific grant.
Great. Well, Matt, thank you very much. This is a great, you know, overview and helpful for us to think about, so we appreciate your time.
I just have one last question, and that is, why do we have three checks on it? What's the star? What does that?
The star just means it wasn't approved by Mass Dot, but it was constructed.
Ah, okay. Well, that's what I, I was wondering, why it had a different, so it was constructed but not approved by Mass Dot. Okay.
Correct. It was paid for a town.
And if we could put a little asterisk somewhere, and let, be sure to let the safety committee know that.
The safety committee know what, you're right. And Matt, when you present to the safety committee, maybe you can use, you know, what you've heard tonight from our board as to how we thought about it, just at least, you know, communicate that a little bit to, I think, our representative, our liaison to the safety committee will do the same, too.
Yeah, well, the liaison to the safety committee won't be there for this presentation because she's going to be in Spain.
All right, well.
I'm glad, glad to have seen it at least.
Okay, great.
Ryan will be back by then.
Yeah, Ryan will be back.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Matt. We have to move to.
My contacts and information's in the last slide. Is there any other questions? But Ryan, Ryan knows where to get me, so give me anything, you know, as a guy.
Great. All right, thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.
Thank you very much. Yeah, have a good one.
All right. So we are rapidly moving along here. I want to keep us on target because I see Ethan Dively, our town council, is online here, and we're going to move to our next agenda item, which is the town administrator bylaw draft review. Just as a way of background, our last meeting, we had a conversation about the TA bylaw. We started with a discussion of what we thought were some of the key components that we might want to include, and then discussed within those, you know, what authority we would want to delegate to the town administrator. I put together a memo based on what we had discussed, which is in your packet. I then sent that, that memo was made out to town council. Town council has reviewed that and then come up with a draft bylaw based on what we had requested at our last meeting. And I asked Ethan to be here to kind of walk us through that bylaw and some of the thought process, and he put together a memo as well that you saw in our packet. But this is our opportunity to have him weigh in on where we're headed with this, and if you have questions as a board, we can ask that. Okay, so Ethan, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
Thanks, Travis, and good evening, everybody. As I think you've all seen, we have a letter, and accompanying the letter is the draft bylaw, excuse me, that is in large part the result of the memo that Travis shared a few weeks ago, which sort of, as we understood it, is the distillation of sort of the key points that you talked about in terms of the authority that you would like to place in the hands of the TA under a draft bylaw. So I guess I don't know what would be most helpful in terms of going over this. I'll say a couple of things about the letter. As a follow-up to the last meeting that I joined at the end of August, one of the questions that we talked through at that point was, so if we want to put hiring authority for certain positions in the hands of the TA, which ones are going to require special legislation? We talked about the statutory boards that would have their own authority to hire their own staff, and as a result, the TA wouldn't sort of be the default person to hire or evaluate those staff members. So I have included in the letter a list of the most common positions you'll see throughout communities in the state. It's probably not everybody, but included in that list is the sort of statutory authority for, you know, the CONSCOM, the Historical Commission, and the ZBA to, in fact, hire their own staff. Now, as I note, that those positions are always contingent on funding, and so you'll find many communities around the Commonwealth don't necessarily even have staff that is unique to, say, the ZBA and the planning board. Maybe they'll share staff. So this is a summary of the kind of positions that the TA would not be able to appoint without special legislation from the state. I also did want to note that we had talked last time I was with you all about sort of the process for adopting a bylaw like this through a special legislation, and then amending it if you'd like to do that in the future. I think I might have misspoke the last time I was with you all, and suggested that it would be easier to revoke the authority than it is to sort of get the special act passed. And I think with what we've discussed generally here, if you go the special act route, you should expect to need a subsequent piece of special legislation to revoke any of those grants of authority. And so I think that's sort of the first issue to tackle in terms of what the board would like to do to proceed is, do you ultimately like to see a bylaw that can go through without special legislation, or are you interested in achieving the goals you've discussed to this point by going through with a special act? And so I think that's sort of at the top of this draft bylaw, the very first thing that we talk about. I've given you two sample paragraphs for 3.3.2, which, the first one sort of gives the TA authority to hire anyone who could be appointed or hired by the select board. The second one goes further and sort of addresses the issues that were included in Travis's memo, which gives the TA the authority to basically appoint, evaluate, and remove pretty much every town employee except for the shortlist included there. So we talked about police chief, fire chief, town clerk, school employees, fire department employees. And in conversation with Travis, I confirmed that probably town council, you would intend for that to be on the list as well. And I mentioned this to Travis recently as well, is that my office could potentially have conflict of interest at some point if we sort of modify the way in which the bylaws prescribe for the appointment of town council. And so I don't think we're there yet because this draft sort of maintains the status quo, the select work, interviews, and hires town council, but we're going to help with this.
I didn't make the decision, but I did tell Ethan. I thought we would certainly talk about it, but I think it makes sense.
So, hey, Ethan, I- Hey, Ethan, I have a kind of a, just a wording question here. On the, on the second, on the second one, were you, I guess it's the second, I'm confused now. Three, the school, why isn't it not the same? Police chief, fire chief. Why, well, I have now two questions. No special act required in 3.3.2? Oh, because you're saying only the ones we have purview, so you don't have to list the ones we don't have purview. I get it. But on the 3.3.2 for the act, it's like the fire chief has authority, the fire chief, we're not giving him authority to hire the fire chief. And we are not giving him to go below the fire chief into his direct reports because that's, you know, strong chief stuff. Isn't the school committee similar? Like, the school committee really only controls the superintendent. And the superintendent has authority over all, you know, generally, not all the cases, because there's some differences. But I think that needs to be nuanced per the real statutes of school committee authority. School committee only has authority over like the business manager and the superintendent. And, and everybody else reports somewhere up to the superintendent, doesn't it?
Yeah, but we're not talking about school committee.
This is just accepting, it's taking out the.
Well, I know, but the way it's, I mean, I'm just saying it's not parallel. Because it, school committee says managed by the school committee and the fire, I don't know. I just say, look at it with, with the eye of that law, because I don't think it's exactly right.
Or it may be legally correct, but when you read it, it doesn't.
Yeah. School committee doesn't have as much authority, they only have, they have, we certainly can't take their authority, but they can't even take some authority below that, so.
Okay, certainly. I think that's something we can, you know, look at more closely for, for the wording. The gist of this, of course, is that you folks aren't going to give the TA any control or any.
Understood, yeah, understood.
Right. And Ethan, a clarification question. So what, my understanding from the last time we talked was that we could separate this into two courses of action. One would be the, the bylaw that we could, that wouldn't require any special act, that we could move ahead and have town meeting approve. And then follow a different track if we wanted to for some additional authority given to the town administrator that does require a special act. But am I incorrect in thinking that, that you could do two separate tracks?
Sure. So certainly we can propose sort of a two-step process for adopting and then amending the bylaw. This will be a new bylaw section for the town if it's sent to town meeting and approved. So that's certainly something we can do. This draft doesn't specifically do that. That wasn't my intent here. I wanted to understand the board's sort of opinion of, of the language that we have here. And then also whether or not that is sort of something the board would like to see in another draft. I think if, if that was to be the case, to, you know, sort of adopt a bylaw that would get through town meeting and in short order be approved by the attorney general's office and take effect, which would then be amended at some point in the future when special legislation were to be approved. I think it would be drafted a little bit differently because we'd want the paragraph that would be inserted to address those things that were requiring the special act to be supplementary to it. So we'd want to think a little bit about how that would be phrased and sort of what the home rule petition itself would, would ask for. But certainly that, that's something that can be done.
I have a question about 3.3.3. Can we really just do that with bylaw without having to go to a special act? And because that's, town administrator shall supervise and manage the day-to-day activities of all town departments and employees. What about employees and departments that are not under the select board's direct control?
Sure. And that's, that's a, that's a good point. So this, 3.3.3 and then through to the end is a simplification of some of the language that was included in the, the original draft that you folks had worked from. And this language, without a special act, that sort of gave the TA full control over, you know, management, hiring, removal, and evaluation of the employees of statutory boards would be lacking teeth, I would say, to some, to some degree, right? So the town administrator pursuant to your current set of bylaws administers the town's personnel policies, which do apply to all town employees, and that's true, regardless of who is the appointing authority for those, those employees. I think one of the things that we've discussed before is sort of what, what happens if one of those employees.
Isn't following.
Doesn't, right, doesn't, doesn't want to submit to the process that's dictated in personnel policies. And so that, 3.3.3 would be functional as is because every employee should be subject to the personnel policies. But ultimately, if some kind of removal or something else was warranted based on employee conduct, that's sort of the 3.3.2 piece of this that does require special legislation. Because the employees of statutory boards could only be appointed or removed by their appointing authority.
Yeah. And I think, I'll just speak first from my personal point of view. That was the whole idea. And we kind of embarked on this, was to make sure that not only did the TA get saddled with the responsibility, but he could also be afforded some authority so it could actually do his job. And I think without the special act, he really doesn't get that.
So I'm happy to talk through some of the other points in this draft and how I think it addresses some of the thoughts in your memo. But certainly if there's any other questions, I'm happy to do this however, however you folks would like.
I guess, I, I wanted to talk about the process and Barney was talking about it a little bit earlier. But if, if we are inclined as a board to say that we are trying to give the TA the authority and to do that, we need to do it as an act, we would go to town meeting with this proposed bylaw as with the act language, have the, the town vote on that. If the town decided that it was in agreement, then it would go to the legislature to enact that. Is that the process or what? And I'm sort of asking the select board as well, but Ethan, from a technical standpoint, is that kind of how it would play out if we decided that?
Sure. Technically, I guess there could be sort of two ways to go about doing this. You could take the position that the entire bylaw requires legislative approval and sort of draft a single warrant article to authorize the select board to petition the legislature for a special act to approve the entire bylaw. That could be done as, as one warrant article. Alternatively, you could, I think, do the, the sort of two-step adoption that we've discussed where Article One would be whether or not to adopt a version of the TA bylaw that would not require special legislation. And then probably the immediate subsequent article would be to authorize the select board to petition the legislature for the insertion of the supplementary paragraph or maybe the replacement of a paragraph that was just adopted in the preceding article. And so that way, you could do it in, in two steps. And obviously, if the town didn't vote to adopt the, sort of the plain version of the bylaw, then there may be.
It'd be available, yeah. That makes sense.
Special special.
So you at least get one under your belt, right?
But the one doesn't really have any authority. It doesn't change.
No, but it caught, I thought we acknowledged that it codifies some things we want to.
Right.
You know, I mean, we, like the options, I think Ethan said earlier, like you could do nothing. We like our TA, he works well, he does what we ask, so why fix it? But future boards and future TAs, it may not be so great. So it's nice to have a document that we can refer to, right? Then, and if, if we are lucky, you know, if the town, if A, the town approves us to go forward to the MGL and the MGL approves it, then great. And if they don't, we at least have, you know, one thing done. So it makes sense to me.
Is there a procedural advantage to just submitting the step two to the legislature versus the entire bylaw? Or does that not really matter?
I don't think it, it's really going to matter. I think sort of the legislature, who's going to review this, and certainly your local state senator representative are going to have, I think, the same questions for a short version of the article as they would for the whole thing. It's largely going to be about sort of the motivation for adopting this and then understanding sort of how it's going to affect the town and why it's essential. So I, I don't know that there's a strategic advantage, one way or another, with respect to how the legislature might view it. We did a little bit of searching as we, as we drafted this. And there are examples of special legislation out there, whether it's to establish a town manager or TA position or to amend or establish a charter, which do give this broad grant of authority to people in this administrative position, whether it's a TA or a town manager. And so I think there's, there's precedent for the legislature approving a provision like this. But I think we discussed at the last meeting I was at in August that certainly if, if the town is unsure, I would say, if sort of this control is something that they want to give to the TA, it will be important to work with your local reps to make sure that they, they understand why the select board is pushing this and why it's essential to the operation of the town as, as you see it.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Is, I can see one of the risks of not getting the special legislation passed, obviously at town meeting, then it could be declined. If it were a, say, one of those like 55, 45 or 52, 48 percent votes, does, does that inform a decision or?
By the MGL?
By, by the legislature?
You mean if our town meeting narrowly.
Narrowly approved, it goes to legislature and say, eh, like, I don't know what that level. Or I think in the previous conversations, I got the sense that typically they'll, will approve these things if they're obviously well thought through and handled properly. But is there a risk that the legislature, it's, it's passed narrowly at town meeting or by whatever proportion, and then it's declined?
Sure. And that's, that's a good question. I think, I, I will randomly pump that question to your local reps, I think.
Okay.
That, that is a very good question to ask to your, your local representatives who sort of are going to deal with the ins and outs of how the legislature as a whole use these things a little bit more often than, than town council does. Usually those are, those are conversations that are had frequently between someone in the TA position, actually, who, who has semi-regular correspondence with, with your elected officials. I think they would be the go-to for questions about whether or not something conceptually like this is likely to be viewed favorably, favorably by the legislature. And then certainly if, how they would view any, any questions over objection from, you know, say, some of the boards who might be subject to this or sort of a close vote at town meeting, that sort of thing.
Quick question.
I was just, was wondering, do both houses have to vote or is it just the House of Representatives or, or the, I mean?
I, I understand that it's, it's both houses.
It's both houses. Okay.
And I want to see if I understood you correctly. If we were to have the, the, a bylaw that did not involve the act by the legislature and then had the, so we had two items on the town meeting warrant. One was to approve the bylaw that town meeting can approve and could be implemented right away. And then the second warrant article was, I think your language was to authorize the select board to submit this to the legislature for, as a special act or whatever the language would be. So potentially, town meeting could approve the basic bylaw, but then could not approve.
That's what we were saying.
Authorizing us to go for the special act.
Right.
Right?
But, but the basic bylaw would be the first paragraph, not the second paragraph.
No, I know. I know. That's why I'm saying.
That's what you were saying. You'd get one, you'd get something.
Right. So we, so it, we really have to be sure we are doing our outreach and education.
Yeah, but you have to do that either way.
It's not going to, it doesn't wait for a board, for instance, to be complaining to their, to our state rep, right? It's, it's before that, they could be.
I thought we covered all that in previous meetings. That's why we're not doing it like now, because it takes some time to market.
Right.
No, no, I know. I'm just.
We got to wait a long time before you bring it up again, so. Yeah, see, we should be transparent. We should say what we want to do and there'll be, you know, questions and we should answer them. And hopefully convince people.
So I guess I'm leaning towards the two articles. First one, the bylaw. Second one, the, with the.
Request, the special act.
Request for the special act. And at least get the bylaw.
Yep.
Because that doesn't step on anybody's toes particularly.
But I'm not, I'm not necessarily sold on that tactic, though.
Okay, all right.
I'm not either.
Because I think if you do that, you also, if there's some level of dissent in what we want to do, I think it gives an easy out to people saying, oh, well, we'll just.
Compromise.
We'll compromise and you get your bylaw, but we're not, where if you just put it all, this is what we want.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if they don't, if they decline it, then we can come back later, we can create a policy. But it's like, you don't want to, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it warrants some consideration.
I tend to agree, given our discussion, that I think that's, you know, an approach we might want to take, assuming we do some outreach here and get some buy-in on that.
And we talked about, you know, once we have at least some, a concept, right, that we wanted to reach out to the various boards we're talking about and see what kind of reaction we're going to get.
Yeah.
Because that could also change things, right, depending on.
Right. But I'd rather reach out with a, what we really want, one, one bylaw, rather than here's a two-step. Because I do think that there, that does allow for people to say, oh, well, maybe this is, and as Scott said, we could enact this as a policy. If, if it doesn't, if we, if we don't get anywhere with it, we can.
There's no rush, right.
We can say, well, we'll codify these things so that the future, a future TA will at least know, you know, but I guess anybody can.
But I, I do think the, to my earlier question, I do think we need to do some due diligence on being confident that if, if we go with a special act and if it is approved, that it will be approved. Because the other risk is that it is approved, but then it's for some reason declined by the, by the MGL, like by the state. And that's, that's part of the equation I don't really have a grasp of.
Ethan and company should be able to research.
But I think that's just part of, I would support the former, the two-step, if we thought there was risk, significant risk, that the state might decline.
Right.
But then it might favor that.
But I mean, we can reach out also.
We could find.
We can reach out to our congressional, you know, our liaisons.
Yeah.
Simon and Mike and all those guys. They've been around, they know.
Does someone want to take the lead on that and do that or not?
I'm happy to reach out to Simon.
Because I know you talk, you, you deal with Simon.
Yeah, I can, I can talk to Simon, sure. And I mean, I don't know Mike that well, but I do talk to him, too. I could do that. So Mike Barrett and.
But there needs to be an entire, as you said, outreach process. We need to get public feedback on this. I mean, we should, we should know the landscape walking into town meeting on, in terms of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
And this is not, this has to be a very open.
We've got to move board-to-board outreach to get, you know, the boards that we know are going to have the questions. The ones that have independently appointed people, they're going to not like it. So we got to have a talk about, you know.
But I think that also should be, by the way, in the broader conversation of the personnel policy. And, and, you know, hiring procedures and things like that. Because I, the other part of this whole thing is to assure ourselves and the town that we're not going to be open to liabilities for poor hiring procedures and make sure that, you know.
Well, I think it's important that we, you know, people don't see this as some kind of like power grab. It's, it's really part of a larger effort and a critical piece to ensure all this other work we're doing actually has practical impact.
Yeah.
And, and you can't do that, and I don't think, you know, you can't do that without some of, some of what we're looking for. So it's not about consolidating power, it's about enabling these policies and procedures.
Yeah, but there's three, yes. But there are three kind of layers to this. So that one, I think we can sell. Like another, we should have standard hiring practices, we should have standard policies that all employees adhere to. And I think we could probably push it to say, you know, not for nothing, but town hall's a service organization. And when we have hours, a representative of your function needs to be there to serve the public. I think we can get that far. The second layer is going to be the one that they say, well, gee, okay, fine, but I still pick away higher. Like, I don't want the TA picking that specialty that I've been elected to manage. That should be our board's decision. And that's going to be, you know, a. And that's gonna be, you know, a discussion. And then the third one, which we counter, is to say, okay, maybe that's true, but you know what? We still have the budget, so if we don't like it, we won't fund it. So can we put, I think, you know, strategically, if you put elements two and three together, say, look, we have the ultimate veto, if we have to use it, we will, so let's not do that. Let's try to go together, maybe it's a joint discussion of the picking of the person and then get an agreement that once they are hired, you know, they fall under the rules. I mean, those are the kind of things I think we have to kind of navigate in the next few months.
They have to be managed and.
Well, clearly they have to be managed, right.
Boards are not equipped to manage staff.
Right, so, right, so we can pick the first argument only and leave reserve them the right to.
This is revisiting that same issue, we talked about this last week. And we said, you know, we're not inclined because the issues get into personnel issues, which we're trying to get to.
No, I understand that, so I'm just, I know I'm reiterating things we've covered, but the point, I guess, is that, well, we need to strategize, I think we all agree, right? We wanna go forward, it sounds like we wanna go forward.
There's some tactical decisions.
With the clean bylaw that goes to the MGL. And, you know, it's just outreach and discussion, but I, we should be prepared to, yeah, I've said enough.
Another track that I'd like to do is identify and talk to some towns that have done something like this, just to see, did it have the effect that they wanted it to have, what were some of the negatives? So, you know, if there are, I'm happy to do some work on that front. If there are some examples, obviously every town is different, but if there are some recent examples of towns that have done some kind of special legislation like that, doing some outreach to those towns and getting that feedback, I think, would be helpful. Because these are problems that aren't specific to Carlisle. And we may as well learn from what other people have done. And I think that would also help inform people's opinions, if you can point to other towns and maybe that may inform our own opinions, one way or the other.
Ethan, you don't have any knowledge of that, do you? Just because you represent other towns as well or you have experience in this, you wouldn't happen to have things off the, and you don't have to disclose them tonight, but is that something that you would have knowledge and could provide? Or is that something better served by a TA or by one of us researching?
So the answer's a little bit, a little bit mixed. As I thought about this issue, some of the other communities we represent do place similar hiring authority in a town manager. And those tend to be communities that have adopted a full municipal charter. And so that's a little bit different from what we're talking about here.
Right.
But in many ways, the sort of level of approval that's required by the legislature to do that can be similar. It depends on the process employed for the charter. We did do a little bit of research before this meeting to look for other examples of special legislation doing this. And there are some examples out there of towns without charters that do have special acts for town manager positions mostly, that are created and have this sort of broad hiring authority. And, you know, every town's a little bit different, so some of the examples I've seen, they've sort of picked and chosen which positions will be hired by the TA and which of their statutory boards will continue to retain that authority. So it's kind of a mixed bag. It's certainly something we can do a little bit of research on, on our end and give you anything that we find. But again, it's not really a, there's no one-size-fits-all for this kind of thing. And so I think, I don't have any good examples to point you to at the moment, but we can, we can do some research. But certainly if anybody else on the board or if Ryan, when he's back, has any thoughts on sort of peer communities that might have had similar issues, I would encourage you to reach out when you're in as well.
Thanks. Are there other questions on this? I don't wanna keep Ethan too long either.
Is there anything we wanna look, I see the blue comment on three point three point eleven. This is around, says something about cemetery deeds.
Right, that's, to speak to that briefly, so one of, one of the items on the memo that we received was about the TA being able to sort of manage the hours of operation and days of operation for town hall. And then also included there was executing cemetery deeds.
Right.
And I think if you look at three point three eleven and then also, together with that, let's see, three point three point three, together, those two. So they have the authority to supervise and oversee town employees. And then the authority to oversee management of town property achieves the first goal of giving TA the ability to decide when town hall's gonna be open and sort of what days of the week it'll be open, that sort of thing. As drafted here, it goes a little bit further and essentially would place in the TA's control any town property where it's not specifically in the care, custody and control of another board. So thinking about conservation land, for one thing, would be probably outside the scope of this. But it's a, it's a general grant of authority to the TA to manage almost, almost all other town property. The cemetery deeds thing is interesting because it's a tool reserved to the town cemetery commissioners, which the select board is. I think it fits into the category of something that might be better established as a policy than written into the bylaw where you folks can establish a policy in your capacity as cemetery commissioners, delegating the authority to sign those deeds to the TA. And it might, it's the kind of thing that's a little bit too specific in some cases to be in a bylaw, but I think we could probably, probably include it here.
Well, the way you've, the way you've written it, it's nonspecific, right?
Yeah, it's, I.
So that's good.
So, I mean, I would tend to take his counsel on that and say, we don't wanna be specific.
I would do it in the policy.
Okay.
There's only one other question that the MFC ran into, and that was the property, managing the fire department property. Because of the way the strong fire chief bylaw legislation is written, there was some dispute about, you know, what the property, the fire chief's property included and whether it was the fire station or just the, you know, the equipment. So if we could get some clarification on that.
Isn't that similar schools as well?
Well, we're working cooperatively with the schools.
I know, but I'm just saying.
But the fire department has been excluded from all that, so I just.
But I mean, is schools similar, they have, we own some of the property, but they own some of the property?
Right, but we are starting to put that, we're working towards putting it under a common facility management.
No, but again, that's a policy thing, right?
Facility department, right?
It may.
But if it moves that direction, does that also encompass the police or fire station?
Right.
I mean, that's a question for counsel.
That's what I was, yeah, that was the question I was asking.
I know, but you, you were narrow in what you asked, I would ask it broadly. ONSCOM, you said, is off the table.
Off the, what do you?
Conservation land.
We conservation land, sorry, you can't give the TA authority over conservation land 'cause he doesn't, we don't have that authority to give him and the MGL would unlikely do that. So my question is, if you're gonna say fire, you should say schools as well, right?
Certainly, so I think this is a good example of sort of one of the thoughts that my team had while drafting this bylaw that we kind of wanted to push back to you folks, is to think about sort of what is the scope of municipal property that the town has, where, who controls it at the moment and sort of what is, what is, what is the goal going forward? Because, again, if we're, if we're gonna submit the whole thing to the legislature, there's, you can, you can ask for a lot. So I think that's really a policy decision for the town to determine sort of which pieces of property the TA would control. And I don't know offhand the answer to Kate's question about, about the fire chief and how much physical property of the fire department he has control. That's something we can look at, certainly as a part of a larger conversation about how to describe the authority over municipal property that would be delegated by a bylaw like this.
Yeah, I would like to get that, actually.
But in, in theory, right, we would retain the, if you had this bylaw, we, the select board would retain the right to, or no, the ability to hire and fire the fire chief.
Yes.
Right, so if we had a situation where we wanted the, the facility maintained a certain way and done under a certain department and a fire chief were to say, no way, this is my structure, we could ultimately have the control to say, you know, sorry.
You either follow it or you're out.
Yeah, you know, and whether we would do that or not and have the political will, maybe not. But maybe, you know, if we're, this is all part of.
Well, but that's, Travis, that's like the budget question. At the end of the day, we could zero fund anything we wanted to zero out. People could yell and scream, but we could do it.
The town approves the budget.
Right, but we can propose a budget which has no funding, right? And we can say, we wanna kill that department off 'cause it's useless or whatever. I mean, those are nuclear options, right, so we don't like to operate that way. The point, I think, that Ethan's raising is, is there a nuance here? That's why I brought up conservation land. That's clearly out of bounds, so we wouldn't try it, 'cause it'll get soundly, I'm sure, rebuffed by the legislature. Those gray areas, the fire station, who controls the town? Yes, we are working cooperatively, but it would be nice if we're gonna go to the trouble of getting a bylaw changed to figure out what makes codify it, so we don't have to have that situation. We just go, hey, the bylaw says, like, it's our building, like, you got the people, we got the building, right? That would be a easier way in the, you know.
That's a good point.
Okay.
We don't know the answer.
We don't, we still need to have an interpretation of the strong.
So we need to understand the current.
Law.
Right.
What, what current, where it currently lies, and then that'll inform if we need to do anything.
Right.
Well, where it currently lies, meaning the authority?
Yeah, for the facility, as Kate was mentioning.
We need, in interpretation of the state law, somebody other than the fire chief.
Right, we need counsel to.
Says about property.
To other towns.
Okay.
And control of property.
So maybe Ethan, you can look into that?
Yeah, that's something we can do and I'll, if it makes sense to the board, I'll make it a little bit broader than that because I mentioned the conservation commission, 'cause they have the statutory authority to accept conservation restrictions under real property, of course, subject to select board approval. But there may be other examples out there that merit some discussion. Library trustees come to mind and think that they probably have control over the library facilities as well. So there may be other things in that vein, similar to the list that I shared for hiring authority that, you know, they would have some control over their own facilities as the default under the statutory provisions that are worth discussing.
What we've done, though, is with the MFC, we've moved that, you know, and I guess it's been a process. And David, you have a good point, you know, if we codify it in this, but it's been a process. So you've mentioned the library, the library previously did everything themselves. And now they've gotten on the program of saying, hey, this works really well. We just file a ticket and, you know, the facility department takes care of it. And facilities and through the MFC decides priorities, if you're gonna do capital improvements there and stuff, rather than having, you know, a librarian or a committee that doesn't, is familiar with that, deciding that. And I, I think it's, it's working well right now. And what I'm wondering is, right now.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's the point, though, isn't it, like?
Because we're trying to establish something that will.
I think, I just, it's probably, it's a, probably.
The originalities.
It's worth getting that list just for our knowledge for properties, just so we know what's in and out of scope. And then we, once we have that list, we can say, is this something we wanna? If it's, say, the library, we, is that out of bounds currently, but we're working cooperatively? Then we can look at it and say, do we wanna codify this for the future? Or do we just say it's working well now, we don't need to mess with it? We can have that discussion. Or, or we don't need to have that discussion 'cause we do have jurisdiction. I think that's kind of the key question.
Okay, great, so we'll have Ethan, we'll do that as a next step, but I do wanna keep this moving.
Yeah.
And as a bylaw, so that we can get it out, get it, you know, start publicly going over it.
One more, yeah, one more, well, under three point three point two, the third paragraph about the event, in the event of a vacancy, disability, et cetera, the town, the TA could appoint another person to serve in an interim capacity. But you're saying over here, Ethan, except for the town clerk? And if you wanted it to include the town clerk, that is part of a special act?
Right, so this is an example of the town clerk has statutory authority to appoint an assistant. You know, again, subject to appropriation as with everything else, but they have the authority to do that and the assistant is someone who's qualified to step in in the event that there's a vacancy in the town clerk's position, whether temporary or otherwise. So that is one example of sort of a temporary hiring authority that exists other than in the hands of the select board and that's by statute. So it is something that would have to be superseded by special legislation.
I, I read, I read that and I actually did wanna talk about that because I had a question. It's, I, I just thought maybe that isn't what I would personally think of is, if the town administrator has a, you know, disability, absence, they're gonna be away for more than thirty days, they're incapacitated, I would think that that would really fall not to them, especially if they're incapacitated, how are they gonna appoint someone? But it would fall to us, the select board, to appoint in that situation, 'cause that is the TA. That's who we're giving all the authority to.
The invet, the vacancy.
So we're talking about the town.
Town administrator can appoint.
Of any appointed town official or employee.
Okay, okay, I, well, if the town administrator had that, they would not, I'm sorry, I read that totally wrong.
Yeah, it's okay, he's late. Yeah, no, it's the town administrator, he's not replacing himself.
Yes, right, that's what I thought.
Okay, so, all right. And that's true of a town clerk which is appointed and not necessarily elected, I take it, obviously?
Yes, this is, this is a power that the town clerk has by statute and that's separate apart from their, the mechanism for their, for their appointment.
It doesn't preclude, though, that language doesn't preclude the town administrator from appointing another town administrator, 'cause he's in a, the town is an appointed town official, right?
But he can appoint a person, is it implied to appoint a person who already works for the town? Or just anybody? I mean, he can and he does, right? Say Aubrey is acting town administrator.
Yes, he does, when he leaves.
While I'm gone.
Vacation.
Okay, and we're fine with that.
We're fine with that.
But Ethan, is this, it's silent on to whether that appoint, like, another person who already works here or somebody he pulls in from the outside?
Sure, so this, this paragraph is drafted to apply broadly to, you know, any, any and all vacancy that may exist in the town, whether it's police chief, fire chief, anybody. So in this case, if we'd like to be more specific about what would happen in the event of sort of an anticipated absence of the TA, that's something we could do. I think, you know, at three point three point one, the select board has complete control over the appointment and removal of the TA. And I think that would be perfectly clear in the event that, you know, the TA was anticipated, in case, maybe a period of leave and then appointed someone who turned out not to be satisfactory. I think the, the select board would retain control to, you know, remove that temporary employee.
I took us down a rabbit hole, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but no, but now that you, no, but I mean, I, I guess we could put language in three point, three point two, the vacancy thing. We could put language that said, you know, the town administrator, in such cases, it wouldn't be the TA himself. It's, like you said, the police chief. You know, should he be guided? Well, either we give him the authority or we don't, but if we give him the authority.
Give him the authority.
And we should maybe also give guidance, preference should be made to appoint as interim someone who's already in that department or function.
I don't think we have to be prescriptive.
Yeah.
No, all right.
Never mind.
All right, I, I think we've had a good discussion here. If there's any other question for Ethan, I really wanna let him go.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
This evening.
All right.
Ethan, thank you very much for this. It's really helpful and it's great work. I think we're, we're moving down the right road. I think there were a couple of items we discussed tonight that you're gonna follow up on and I'll follow up with you, making sure that, you know, we get this and we'll probably move it to the next meeting or one thereafter, just for a discussion, all right?
Thank you.
That sounds great to me and let's maybe connect later this week to make sure that I have the same to-do list for my team as you do.
Sounds good, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, Ethan, thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
All right, great, well, that's good. Great, well, that's good. We are sort of ahead of schedule. We did, we did the TA report, I think we got through some of it, but not all.
I think there might be a little left.
Why don't we, why don't we work on that?
Yeah. So, another thing is, we already just, we're discussing the cemetery task force, that new one. So, they met for the first time this month, and they conducted a site visit at the Green Cemetery. And they're working a set of goals, present to the Select Board for further consideration. This will include expansion planning, operational regulatory considerations, cemetery software, capital planning, and historical preservation. So, a lot of changes coming from that, which is fantastic.
And I, I attended that visit as the liaison, and I had no idea. Yeah, there's, I, when I saw cemetery task force, I didn't have any idea of what the sculptural work is actually entailed. And so, credit to the volunteers who stepped up, and credit to Ryan for identifying this as a need, because there is some work to do. Believe it or not, there is.
Yeah. Not to mention the fact that nobody knows where anybody's buried.
Well, no, we, you know, it's there, the knowledge is there.
It's there, but it'll probably be a lot nicer somewhere.
Easily accessible.
Then, Chapter 90 approvals, attached to the report is an update on the road man, maintenance plan. So, there's additional paving happening by Newport Construction. Church Street needed more repair in asphalt than originally anticipated. And this is already determined to be fair and accurate. Maple Street guard rail, there's an extension request, adding 275 feet of guard rail to all four corners of the Maple Street project. They were assessing the stone banking, that they need that.
And we just got the note this afternoon from Ryan, right?
Yeah, got the grant.
We got the grant to cover the cost of that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I missed that, okay, good.
The culvert assessment project, that was discussed this summer. And then there's, so there's a long-term maintenance plan. And this will also be added to the GIS platform, which I want to add as a fantastic platform for legacy plant, platform. And then Fezal Hill Lane design considerations, there's need to finish the top coat for Fezal Hill Lane. There are significant drainage issues that need to be addressed prior to paving. So, there's a proposal attached to this that assists the road, and offering solutions that will correct the identified issues. And then, there is a spreadsheet with all the total paving costs, if you wanted to take a look at that. And the grants are totaling more than $90,000. So, you can expect somewhere between $250,000 to $400,000 in state funding for 2025.
And, I have to bring it up, unfortunately. With Chapter 90, how much input do we have on things such as guard rail replacement or extensions? I live off of Curve Street, and I hear a lot of feedback about the size of the guard rails, the resulting with, perceived or actual width of the street. And as, as a resident that goes by there all the time, it, it does raise those questions in terms of, why are these so big?
Sure.
Is, is that just a function of, one, it's over a dam, two, it's Chapter 90 in the state? Is, it's basically adhering to whatever the state requirements are?
Yeah, so I'm not sure what requirement, what requirements it's coming from, but I'm sure there is some sort of engineering spec that is trying to cover for that.
And that's generally done by the state for these projects, right? Like, they, they basically, I'm sure they just have requirements.
Yeah, I'm not sure how much control in Chapter 90, like, controls with that, like, that specified it, specificity. So, like, that would be a good question for Ryan, when he gets back of, you know, why they're engineered the way they are with that size. So, I think that would be a good question for him.
It's because it's, they couldn't go out further, because they would have to have graded, and that would have been more disturbance in sensitive areas. So, that's why they didn't do it.
Yeah. And I think there was a comment that Maple might have a similar issue in terms of new guard rails and width. And even, you know, do we need to put on, like, yield signs one way? Because in some cases, you can't, two vehicles can't pass. And maybe before, they're doing the wrong thing, where they're driving off the road a little bit, and then eroding the bank. Now, the, one, somebody has to back up, and so, something to consider also is, in these projects, do we need a, is it gonna yield the traffic sign, at least in one direction?
Good thing for the safety committee.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. You should get, you should get your residents to go.
I always say, there's, there's narrower parts of curve anyway. I mean.
Yes.
But it's, and, but you're, so you're typically almost driving into the telephone pole, about four different spots, but you can get around each other. And I think the perception in some of these cases, you put these big guard rails up.
They feel really high, especially too, yeah.
You just psychologically, you don't want to get over as far, because you feel like you're about to scrape it. But I, I do think we should look at, if that's the reality, we should account for that. And in those cases, maybe something we can have the safety committee look at, is just, should we just put a, it's only like 100 feet, but it's, who goes? You know, when they meet.
Yeah.
So, for capital project updates, there was a, there will be a final project walkthrough at the end of the month to close out the Grunow Barn deconstruction project. Ryan also approved the restoration of transportation costs for the Kubla. So, yeah, then slate roof tiles will be stored at the DPW.
Do you know when that walkthrough is?
I don't know on top of my head, we can confirm that tomorrow, what that time is. The Cory Auditorium lighting project continues to move, and it remains on schedule, should be completed within five to seven weeks. There's been a lot of tree clearing that will be starting this week to complete the dog park at Banta Davis. And there's a timeline attached for this, for when that will be completed. Contracts are being signed, signed for the central burying ground projects. That first phase will include removing trees that threaten the historical gravestones. Next, the contractors will store the gravestones to their original positions and replace the roof of the Litchfield seat. Although the entrance pillars were included in the original job description, the budget will not allow these to be replaced, and the Historical Commission is likely to seek additional CPC funding in the spring. For the building construction projects, for the library renovation, the library building committee shortlisted some owner, owners, project managers, and will interview the final candidates at the beginning of October. And those are the three candidates. For the police station renovation, Brian is negotiating a scope of services and cost proposal, the construction monitoring services. So, he'll present the results of this negotiation, and ultimately, you know, the Select Board will approve this. If he's not able to negotiate an acceptable fee, we will move on to the second place candidate, So, and then the fire station renovation, the firm sent representatives to the fire station renovation OPM project walkthrough last week. There's significant interest, and the bid proposals are due at the end of the month. And Brian's still recommending that you hold a separate workshop to vet proposals and create a shortlist to interview in upcoming Select Board meeting.
And that's the special meeting we have set in October, right? An additional nighttime meeting? Because I don't think that was on the calendar.
So, we'll make sure that that's on the calendar, then.
Yeah, I forget when it is, but it's on my calendar.
Yeah, it's not on there.
Sure, I'll make sure that that's on there.
Yeah.
October 15th.
October 15th, okay.
So, when do we think we'll have the actual proposals? Because that'll also give us a sense of the cost, and.
Sure, so if he's collecting these by the end of the month, so it'll probably be a quick turnaround by then. So, I can have them confirm on that tomorrow.
So, we wouldn't meet before, you said 15th of?
15th of October, but it would be nice to get them, so we can read them.
We wouldn't meet if we don't have them, right? We wouldn't meet on the 15th.
No, you would definitely have them before then, I, yeah.
So, but, so when do we, I'm kind of, in the back of my head, I'm just trying to get a sense of timing and cost, because it'll, it relates to some of the remaining ARPA work that needs to happen. So, the sooner we know generally what it costs and the timing, my plan would be at the next meeting to make some final adjustments to free up remaining ARPA funds.
All right, I'll have Ryan confirm when.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because we can put that on the next agenda.
Police station? For which one?
Fire station.
Fire station.
Fire station OPM.
Okay.
Okay.
So, then, just upcoming discussion points, capital planning, as always, annually. So, there'll be a presentation to the board on October 8th. Kelly and Ryan have been working on a five-year projection with the newly created chart of accounts, which is exciting. And that will also be presented on October 8th. Fire station OPM. And as, you know, the Select Board has decided to serve as Designer Selection Committee for this appointment. So, they'll evaluate that, as we were discussing. So, scheduled for the workshop, okay, so it's staying October 22nd for that workshop, so. And then staff recognition.
No, I think that's a, excuse me, sorry to interrupt, but I think that's a regular Select Board meeting.
Okay, so we'll, let's, let's confirm that with Ryan.
Well, you, the special meeting is the 15th.
It's the 15th, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the Tuesday in between those two regular Select Board meetings.
Okay. Okay.
We have a busy October.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, because the 16th, I'm gonna remind everybody again, is the open house, the first open house for the MBTA community.
Vulnerability, the MVP?
No, MBTA.
MBTA Communities Meeting, 6:00 PM, right?
6:00 PM, and we today decided on a second one. So, we'll do on Saturday, 16th of November. So, you guys have a chance to go to one or the other.
So, say the date again?
October 16th at 6:00 in the evening.
Okay.
Or four, sorry, 4:00 to 6:00.
I think it's at 6:00 PM.
Sorry. 6:00 PM.
We are here?
Here.
Is there a Zoom match?
No. And that's why we're doing it, or November 16th, 9:00 to noon.
Okay.
And, but what is it, like, are there gonna be officials here for Q and A, or?
There's going to be, the MBTA Subcommittee will be here with the big posters that will show, you know, various.
The areas you're considering.
Things, yeah, there's that, showing, trying to give information about the technical details about the law, and things like that. And then, we're, it's gonna be an open house, so people will be trickling in and out, and there'll be somebody at each station that you can have a discussion with and ask questions of their presentation there.
So, 6:00 to 8:00, and then November 16th is what?
9:00 to noon. And we're going to be sending out a postcard to everybody in the, in town.
Oh, good.
And if you haven't already, don't forget to do the survey.
Yep.
Okay, sorry, putting those plugs.
Oh, that's good. So, yeah, we can check with Ryan with these upcoming Select Board dates. And then, obviously, the Fall Town Meeting's not gonna be on there anymore. And then, just some upcoming holidays.
All right, staff recognition, we didn't do that.
Oh, sorry, I skipped that. So, we would like to publicly thank the facilities folks, Dan Flannery and Alflett, for their above and beyond approach to town building maintenance. There's been a lot happening, and they've really been doing a lot, it's been short staff, so they've been very, very busy. I see them running around constantly, making sure that everything is, you know, maintained, but also improved. There's been a lot of changes. So, it's very much appreciated by Stephen Canerney and Ryan. And then, the next is just the draft agenda.
Okay. November 12th, since we no longer have a town, special town meeting, will that be a Select Board meeting? That's maybe a question for Ryan. I think we, we will, we would normally.
If it's a regular schedule.
It's a regular. Finance stuff, yeah.
Yep, so, maybe mark your calendars accordingly.
Yeah.
Just, in other words, don't take it out of your calendar.
Right, exactly.
Okay, November 12th, Select Board.
And I wanted to ask, or just make sure, everyone on the Select Board has scheduled a time to meet with Ryan for.
I have to do that.
Already done it, I'm good.
When's he back?
Tomorrow, Thursday, Thursday. He's out tomorrow.
No, he's back. Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, he's back.
He's out tomorrow, he's back Thursday.
On Thursday, because that's when I meet with him, okay.
And just a note, too, Thursday, we're doing the sexual harassment workplace discrimination training. And so, there's a three-hour session in the morning, and then another three-hour session in the afternoon that folks can choose from. So, I'm also going to just announce that some services might be limited during hours of the day, but.
This is on this Thursday?
But most departments have made it, so they're staggering who's going when, so that makes it so.
That's good.
This is a third party doing the training?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? We, do we have some things to sign? I just wanted to make sure we pass those around before we adjourn or.
And it says the draft agenda to be discussed at the Select Board meeting?
For October 8th.
Yeah, for the next Select Board meeting. I guess that's not in here, okay.
It's, it's in there.
Is it that one, that, this October 8th one?
Oh, yeah, so, oh, okay, so it's not in this TA report? Oh, I see, but it's in the.
It is in there, if you keep scrolling down.
I got, no, no, I'm just looking at the TA report alone, okay.
We need, before we sign these, are we supposed to?
We haven't done the.
We haven't done the motions.
Is that all that's in there?
Oh, yes, we need to do that.
I didn't know if there was anything else. There was another motion.
And the warrants.
And there's the proclamation.
Oh, we already did that one, we could sign the proclamation.
Okay. I move to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery described as follows, Lot D 337 Graves 1 and 2, to Deborah Krupp at Four Garrison Way. Lot D 390 Graves 1 and 2, to Michael Casia, formerly of 320 Russell Street. Lot D 401 Grave 3, to Linda Bezy, 240 Acton Street.
There a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And then, action item nine, for meeting minutes.
Review of the warrants and minutes?
Yeah, we have to review and approve the minutes, right?
We do, we do. I'm just, all right, so we have the Tuesday, August 27th minutes.
Move approval.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, second, anyone?
Second.
All right. Everyone have a chance to read them, look at them.
I read them.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed? And what's the other one?
Move, we approve the Select Board meetings from September 10th, as printed.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.